Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 8th meeting of Placerville City Council. We are going to go into closed session, but wanted to open it up for if there's any public comment on closed session items. And again, this is just public comment on closed session items. Yeah, if you'd like to speak on any item for closed session, just raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I just think we probably should announce that the closed session item of council with count conference with legal counsel threatened litigation is no longer on the closed session agenda.
Right. Thank you. Yes. Item three is not no longer an item. Thank you, John. Okay, see no comments. We'll go ahead and adjourn into closed session and we will be back at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, good evening and welcome back to the Tuesday, December 8th meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance, which is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. And we have kind of a bifurcated meal or meeting today. We're gonna do our swearing, our some of our ceremonial matters, then we're gonna have a 20-minute break for everybody to adjourn back to their to their homes and do the rest of the meeting on Zoom. So just in case you didn't see that on the agenda, I just wanted to give people a heads up on that. So with that, we'll go ahead and do roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
I like a voice from behind.
A voice from the other usually.
Mayor Saragossa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and move into ceremonial matters, item three and item 3.1, recognition of our outgoing council member. And Mr. Morris is gonna start us off.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Saragossa. This is one of those things that we don't like doing. We it's it's an honor for me to say that I've now worked with Mark pretty much for 10 years. He had a brief little break in there.
A break?
Came back and but it's been great working with Mark. He's always been very attentive, very supportive of me. I've appreciated that. We've worked well together. We haven't always agreed, I would say, but we've been able to work that out and always been able to get things done, I think. And I've appreciated his his support, his his love for the city and really having a good view in my mind of what what the city is about and where we need to go. And I have really appreciated that. So that's just my introduction. We do have a couple of things. Mayor, I'm gonna give this to you. I'm gonna you present this to to Mark, if you would please.
Yep.
So and if I could, I have one more item. We're unfortunate in the situation with the pandemic that we're in. We're not many of our staff, my staff, wanted to be here tonight, Mark, to thank you for your service and wish you the best as you go into the next phase without being on the council. And this is from our police department, this is from our Chief Joe Renn. And Joe's on there, he can comment too, if he'd like to, but I'll read this, if that's all right. Councilmember Mark Acuna, please accept this flag, which flew over the Placerville Police Department on December 1st, 2020, as a symbol of our appreciation for your many years of service to the city of Placerville. Your dedication and commitment to public safety assisted the Placerville Police Department in developing strategies to better serve the community. With honor and respect, the team at Placerville Police Department, Joe Renn, Chief of Police.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I don't know why we're saying goodbye. Mark's still gonna come down here and bug me. No, Mark, it's it's just been it's just been fantastic developing this relationship with you over the last five years. You've been just absolutely valuable to the police department, your experience, your knowledge. And I think the biggest thing, your compassion for the city as it as it relates to public safety concerns. So again, from the team here at Placerville Police Department, bittersweet farewell, but but we know you're still gonna be around and we're excited about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
And I, you know, I want to say a few things. And first off, we're gonna miss you dearly on City Council. I agree with Joe, you'll be there. And don't expect us not to still keep bugging you and calling you on a variety of issues to get your opinion. But I want to personally thank you, Mark, one, for your friendship, but two, for kind of taking me under your wing when I first came on City Council and, you know, really showing me the ropes and how to how to do this job. I greatly appreciate that, including me in so that I had a chance to learn and and get to do this job better. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate your wisdom on the City Council. I don't think any city, and again, this is where we're still gonna call on you. I don't think any city in California has somebody with your experience dealing with these energy matters and with PG&E. We may very well have lost our powers a few days ago if it hadn't been for some of your efforts as well. And I don't think that's I want the public to know that, that when we were when these got shortened or or canceled, a lot of that was the work that you did on behalf of the citizens here. Lots of hours on the phone and talking to people that people don't realize that are going on behind the scenes when this happened. So thank you so much for all you've done for Placerville, Mark. You will be greatly missed on the City Council.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I would also like to say a couple words. That sounded a lot like what Michael said. I also, we came on the council similar times. And as a new council member, I also feel like you took me under your wing. And I really appreciate your mentorship and encouragement and all the insights and wisdom and knowledge of of all the history and of the city and the issues that have come before the council. You'll you'll be sorely missed, but I know that I'm hoping that you will still be assisting us, especially with the PG&E issues. So I'm sure that we will be seeing you around. You will still be assisting us, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'll go ahead. Sure. Okay. You know, I think Wendy, I threw your first party when you left the first time.
Yeah, thank you. Let me come over later.
I don't know how many people know this is your second run at City Council and and that your first one. How many years was it, your first one?
Nine.
Nine. Then this was another eight.
Five, another five.
Oh, wait, you were midterm, weren't you?
Yeah.
And you stepped up when we needed to fill a vacancy? And and then you ran.
See, Cheryl Patton stepped down and moved to Montana.
That's right.
Councilmember Patton.
Yes. So, you know, we tapped into you again. And once again, you stepped up and to serve the city, which is which is it's an amazing thing, one go through nine years and then step up to the plate and do it again, after knowing what nine years was like. And so for your dedication to the city over these years, your history, your knowledge, your experience is invaluable to to this council and to what is invaluable to the city and how we have been able to navigate, one, going through the Great Recession. And you went you went through that. And you were a very important part in figuring out how to manage such a dire time when the city was struggling so much. And then to come back around to this next phase. And we're doing it again. And your in your in your leadership and your thoughts and your history of that, but you've come up with stuff that I
For the fact that I don't remember.
Right. And but it's valuable. And I don't think people understand the value in that. Or maybe they do. I don't know. But I appreciate that. And I think it's amazing for the city that you have been able to that you have that you have given of yourself and your time to to do that. So with that, you know, I just want to express my appreciation.
I appreciate that.
So that leaves me. And Mark and I have served together for all those many years. First time around and went to a party at Marion's house to say farewell.
Yeah, that's right.
And here we are. We're back again. And it's just been, I just say, you know, to all the what the other folks have had to say. It's just been really great. And I'm gonna really, really miss having you on the council. It's not gonna seem the same. I'm just maybe speaking out of turn, but I think we ought to create another position that he's our official PG&E rep or something. It'll be unpaid.
True, true.
It kind of works that way now.
Well, there you go. But anyway, my many, many thanks for all that you do and all the things that you've assisted me on and all the things we've tried to get done and didn't succeed. That's always a bummer, you know, when you have to leave with that. But you planted the seeds, hopefully, and things will happen.
Thank you, Patty. Mark, is it my turn?
Yes.
Like, first of all, thank you all very much for your very kind words. Cleve and the chief, thank you very much. It means a great deal. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to go out kind of in my traditional mode and do a jump over to what normally would be 3.1, council member comments. Because I have a couple of things I think are important that the community needs to know about before I complete my last few minutes here. First of all, I think it's important to shout out to the Veer Camp Construction and also our engineering department and all the other various city staffers and council members that were a part of this year's fantastic Christmas decorations, lights, tree, the decorations along the Highway 50 entrances. It took an awful lot of effort and an awful lot of strange work hours to get that back. And if ever there was a year that we needed to have a bright spot, it was certainly this year. And so thank you for everybody that came out to do that. It would also be appropriate to acknowledge Rebecca and the engineering department and again, the same contracting firm, Doug Veer Camp Engineering, for completing Phase Two today of Spring Street, once one of the rated the worst street in the city of Placerville by its residents a few years ago. So congratulations to them. They had the wisdom to pick the only December that has had record high temperatures in the last century. So that's how good they are. And it's still not supposed to rain until Rebecca gets mosquito throat paid. So but seriously, huge feat. We can now move on Measure L and Measure H, the commitment that the voters put into this city management and the city councils. So thank you to all of those people and those voters. And in regards as far as PG&E, yeah, we had Cleveland and I had another long weekend. I had to call him up and get a little pep talk. And I said, Cleve, do you want me to keep fighting? And he goes, yep, the wind's not gonna blow over 15 miles an hour. And I said, okay, I'm on it. So I spent probably a total of three days engaged with PG&E, right up to their vice president this time.
Wow.
And shared with him as it was occurring this past this past PSPS. And they didn't shut the power off. And thanks to Chief Cordero, Eldorado County Fire, he shared the information today that they did not have any power line related issues in the county and the Eldorado County Fire District itself. So that goes to show that it was okay to leave those lights on. The rain of acorns on my house, however, was a different story when the wind was blowing. I'd also like to close by thanking the Toys for Tots organization here in Eldorado County, the Marine Corps, and our Placerville Police Department. I know the Marine Corps is near and dear to Joe Joe Renn's heart. And the mission that they were able to accomplish this weekend, they were out there for two solid days collecting toys, and they could still give more toys to any of the locations. So thank them very much for doing that. And I'd like to note for myself personally, that unfortunately, a small group of individuals chose to use that event for their own for promotion of their own agenda, that they don't represent their residents or or the businesses in Placerville. And that I would encourage every citizen to investigate on their own to find out who the individuals were behind that action and to know that hate has no place in Placerville. Now, if I could take a couple of minutes to just say thank you, let me start by saying what a great honor and a privilege it has been to serve this city. I am filled with gratitude and appreciation for the opportunity that being a part of this council has presented over the 14 years that I've served, my years of training when I was on the planning commission, when they had some real contentious projects, and it was a lot of fun to go to those. Before I start thanking, however, it would be, or I should say, it shall thank, it is most appropriate that I start by thanking my wife, who has endured endless meetings, emails, phone calls, driving around, looking at flooded city streets, and just it was her support and help and and love that allowed me to be able to give so much to the city, knowing that I had her support and knowing that she was there whenever I needed that extra hand to try and figure some issue out. That you just don't go home from these meetings and go to sleep. At least I don't. So thank you very much, Candy. I appreciate everything that you've done. I love you and I look forward to retiring.
Me too.
Secondly, I think it's most important to thank the voters. I've been elected three times. And every time, I have always taken that trust, as is about to be sworn in tonight with our newest council member and and our mayor being officially elected, the honor that that is and the trust that's being placed in in each one of us to to guide this city night and day, seven days a week sometimes, and through a whole variety of issues. And some of them are historic and some of them haven't even been thought up yet. But we have to be prepared. And so I thank the voters for three different times solidly endorsing me and allowing me to be their leader. Next, I think I would like to thank every city employee that we've had. There's certainly been a whole number of them that I've worked with over the years. Unfortunately, their ranks have shrunken over the years. It was over 120 at one time. And now I'm afraid to ask, it may be closer to 90 employees here in the city. But they continue to marvel me at the ability to keep this town running. Sometimes it's with a bale of wire and string, but that might be okay. It's their enthusiasm and their passion that that makes this a makes this job fun and exciting and to support them. Certainly, I would like to thank the department heads. As I leave, the current department heads, I think we couldn't be any more blessed. Worked with some amazingly talented and committed department heads in the past. But this current group of department heads, I think, is just absolutely stellar. And it's their everyday commitment to coming in and solving the issues, working with the citizens and working with all the different individuals that are involved in the city that makes us a success. It would be appropriate for me to just to end by thanking a couple of folks. One, the late Bob Salazar, who served with me. I was a we were both on the planning commission years ago. And it was Bob's passion and love for the city that I think that inspired me to move forward. I'd like to thank Marion Washburn. Marion has been a steadfast advocate, not only in all the years that she's served on this council and then on the planning commission, but as a private citizen. And I think if I need any guidance on how to be a good retired council member, I think she would be the excellent person for me to get advice from. I've already mentioned Chief Renn. I'd also like to thank Chief Cordero for both of those men and their commitment in the organizations that they bring to protect and their city. It's very clear to me that that's a seven-day-a-week job. So I will just end by saying what an honor it has been and the many challenges that we've faced and we've overcome. And we've overcome it all as a team. From the Great has David Warren warned us the Great Depression recession and through to proving once again that our town is a low-fail tax generator. And I'm here to do what I can to support all of you as you move forward and deal with the challenges that are coming, the Highway 50 and energy outages and so on. So I just say thank you all very much and may you all be blessed as you move forward. Thank you, Mark. I think we might actually, we have a couple of phone calls as well, so.
Oh, yeah. If I can announce, we'll now take public comment on this item, which is item 3.1, recognition for outgoing council members. And I think that's star nine, if you're on a cell phone, or you can use the raise your hand function. So we will first have Wendy Thomas.
Good evening, Wendy.
Good evening, Placerville City Council. It is a pleasure to be with you. And Councilmember Mark Acuna, tonight is bittersweet. While I am delighted to welcome Jackie Noe to the Placerville City Council tonight, I am certainly saddened to lose you, Mark. It was a tremendous privilege to serve with you on the City Council. Throughout your years as a public servant, I have greatly appreciated your ability to elevate thought and to bring a balanced and sensible approach to decision making. Your ability to acknowledge the good in our community made where we live a better place. An example is the awards that you regularly gave, which celebrated meaningful projects in our city. Your work with the Measure L Committee, along with Jackie Noe, I might add, secured over $40 million over the next 17 years to fix the roads and pipes in Placerville. That was a proud moment and a tremendous accomplishment. And your work was was instrumental in that success. And finally, as was noted by the entire council and staff tonight, your work to continually challenge PG&E's power outages has meant that our small rural voice has been heard and noted. And your work continues to greatly matter to our city. So may your next chapter bring you and Candy many blessings. And Mark, may you have the confidence that your service has made a meaningful difference in our community. Very grateful to you and look forward to your continued friendship. So all the best to you, Mark. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Wendy.
Now taking public comment from Dominic Gallegos.
Good evening, Dominic.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about the Toys for Tots.
No, that's this will be at item 7.2. This is just on for outgoing council member Acuna. So you want to call back at item 7.2.
Okay, when's that?
When item 7.2 comes up, we're on item 3.1.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from John.
Hey, Mark.
Good evening.
Congratulations. I'm just Wendy, Wendy, of course, said everything way better than I could have. So I'm not even gonna get to those bits. You've been you've been a true a true lover of this town and and everything in it. And and it's to be admired. And of course, it's good now that we still have somebody representing the greater country club area on the City Council. Way to go, Jackie. So we won't they won't ignore us. They may send us snowplow up here every once in a while. Mark, it's been a pleasure. I, you know, as a neighbor, you're wonderful and certainly as a council member. And now I'm just looking forward to us sitting like somewhere with a drink, listening and watching these meetings and and maybe causing some mischief every once in a while. Though and certainly, you'll probably leave after this. You can certainly drop by. I'm making some chicken pot pies. And you're more than welcome to drop by. And we'll watch the rest of this thing happen. I'm curious about the guy with the face mask. Anyway, good, good luck to you and Candy. And come on over for a drink and some dinner.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Tracy Doyle.
Good evening, Tracy.
Oh, hey, guys. I am calling in. So I just wanted to say hello to Mr. Acuna. I'm gonna read a comment you wrote, and then I'll tell you why. Thank you for posting this statement. The community needs to question those responsible for the photo. It should be noted that Mandy Rodriguez, a recent candidate for City Council, is one of the major players supporting the Proud Boys in arranging the photos. She is not the Placerville I support.
Again, if you if you want to make a comment.
Oh, hang on. I'll tie it in for you. You should be ashamed. You should not be having your back patted.
I'm taking public comment from Sue Rodman.
Good evening, Sue.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, Mark, thank you very much for all you've done for Placerville. And thank you for all your support for Measure Measure H and Measure L. Without you, I don't think we would have made it all the way through. But we really do appreciate you and all the other work that you have done, and especially for taking on PG&E. That's the monster in the room. And good for you. And so thank you very much. I appreciate all you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Now taking public comment from Kelly Chisano.
Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Council. Mark, I appreciate all the help and level-headedness you brought to the board in the cannabis application. I feel like I got a good sense of getting to know you through these meetings over the last couple of years. And it's really been a pleasure. I hope to see you in public. And when we open, we'll have you in.
All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Yep. Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Jen C.
Good evening, Jen. Jennifer? Jennifer, are you unmuted? Jennifer? Why don't we come back to Jennifer?
I think right now she's the last one I see there. Absolutely. Come to the microphone.
Jennifer, we're gonna come back to you. We have one more in-house comment.
Mark, it seems like it's been a really long time since we had the first meetings. I think it was the sewer and the water where Steve and I really started to come to the council meetings and get involved. And you were always so calm and sensible and willing to talk to us. And I know that Steve would like to thank you just as much as I for your just sensible approach, your friendship, and your great leadership in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Jennifer, we'll come go back to Jennifer.
She's she's no longer. Well, she's there, but I can't.
Is she gone?
She doesn't have her hand raised anymore.
Okay. Okay. Any other?
That's all.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
We can. Yep, we got you.
Yeah, I think you guys disconnected me. It's Tracy. So what I was trying.
Different person.
I don't know how she got back on. I had her.
You're a bully. And y'all don't know how to work Zoom.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to the council. So again, Mark, thank you for all your service and dedication to the city. So again, Mark, thank you for all your service and dedication to the city and it's unfortunate that even, you know, in this, we're, we're doing a, a thank you for your fourteen years of service that you have people call in to, you know, besmirch that. So that's, that's unfortunate, there's plenty of time to make comments later on in this, in this meeting, but. Well, thank you Mr. Mayor and you know, that just goes with being a part of public life, whether you're a candidate or whether you're elected and being responsible for words and videos, et cetera. So if I could just say, I would like to make a specific point, the thanking Clay for all the fun that we had together really, and John Driscoll too, because I think it was mostly. Thank you more as my city attorney. So as I refer to him with great affection, Attorney Driscoll. But working with the city manager, we were literally standing at the sewer plant as it was flooding a couple, three years ago, in questionable water quality, watching our guys wrestle with trying to keep the plant from getting swamped. And the moon came out and it quit raining and I said, well, this is a lovely place to be, Clay, I'll never forget this and I haven't. But that's just the kind of dedication and it's a pleasure to have been working with him all these years and knowing that we could always have that open and honest discussion. So thank you all very, very much again for all of your conversations this evening and the plaque and flag Joe, thank you. But that's. Thank you Mark. Come on please, Mr. Mayor. All right, I'd almost like to, I want to be a part of this next part. We're going to take just a five minute break here.
We do have Jen C is back on.
Oh.
If you want to try to get her.
Jennifer, are you back on?
Hold on, it's right there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh great, I, I do want to thank Mark because I do understand, you know, public service and I really do appreciate it, I really appreciate all the hours and I will say, Mark, I remember that meeting that we had, it was a small group, but you came over and met in one of my neighbor's houses and we talked about Clay Street issues, traffic issues and I, I appreciate that personal, you know, commitment to come and, you know, meet with folks outside of city council meetings. So I just will say, appreciate all that and, you know, you asked me, you know, you were Facebooking about the Kembellic sign and I don't even know you said something about let's bring it to city council and I just want to say, I appreciate that you acknowledged the Kembellic sign had, you know, a historical iconic significance here in Placerville and, you know, I would love to work with you on historic, you know, historic resource issues. So, you know, you have my email and, but thank you for your service.
Thank you Jennifer, appreciate it. Thank you Jennifer.
I think that's all now.
Okay, okay, then we're good. Okay, all right, then we were going to go ahead then and move on to item three point two and that's acknowledge and file the official final election report from November third, twenty twenty and Ms. O'Connell has this for us. Evening.
Good evening Mayor, members of council. So you may recall these two, item three point two and three point three are very similar. Three point three is acknowledge and file the county's final official result of the election and which they finalize on November twenty fifth and you have that report in your packet. And then three point three is just, it's a requirement by the election code to accept the canvas of ballots by resolution. And so three point two is as knowledge and file, three is by resolution.
Okay, thank you Ms. O'Connell, any questions? Need a motion for three point two?
Three point three, I think.
I'll make a motion. Okay, to re, well, let's see, I was going to make a motion to adopt three point three. Right, because three point two is a disbursement and file, three point three would be the, the resolution.
Resolution.
Adopt the resolution, the certification of the canvas of ballots.
One second.
All right, we have a first and a second, we'll go ahead and open up for any public comments on three point two and three point three.
Now taking public comment for items three point two and three point three regarding the certification of the election. I see one hand raised, Ruth Michelson.
Yes, good evening, yeah, good evening, I'll be brief. It has to do with three point three, the resolution accepting certification of the ballots. I'm not against that of course, but I did want to bring up something that, an attempt was made for a recount for a difference of fourteen votes between Jackie Noe and Tracy Humm. And, you know, the, I know you're not, you're not responsible for this, it's the Elections Department of the county, but to do a recount, it would have cost ten thousand dollars, which is really outrageous for anyone who isn't of means, any of us who aren't of means, I'm not speaking of anyone specifically, ten thousand dollars. And I actually brought this up at the board meeting today as well, because I really would like that policy to be looked at, especially when it's so close. I know that in other elections, it's an automatic recount when it's less than one percent. So I just ask that we might be prepared in the future, should an election be so close again, that it wouldn't be so onerous to do a recount? And that's really all I have to say and I'd appreciate you considering that and looking into it, even though it's a, it's a county function, you have a working relationship with them when it comes to elections. So thank you very much.
Thank you Ruth.
Now taking public comment from Jen C.
Go ahead Jen.
I'm sorry, I am so sorry, I got it. I, I just am using this on my phone because I don't have audio on my computer. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I, I just, I just want to say, you know, I, I mean, this thing with the recount, you know, it is really close and there are jurisdictions that would trigger a mandatory recount and, you know, we did try to do some fundraising. I'm, I mean, I'll raise my hand and acknowledge that I'm the one that, you know, kind of did the formal request, I mean, it was finding out about it at the very last minute and I'll, and I'll just say, you know, it's amazing that it was that close. I mean, to have, to have an incumbent mayor, you know, appearing with a single candidate all over town, you know, in the mail, on the door, hangers everywhere, you know, it's pretty hard to overcome such a presence, you know, and, you know, so I, I just, again, I mean, I think it was great, it was a great, it was great that we had five candidates and, you know, I appreciate, I mean, I do appreciate everything that it takes to run and, and, and all of the candidates, but I, I agree, you know, with Ruth, obviously, that I, I do think that a recount was certainly in order and to raise ten thousand dollars, you know, maybe, you know, maybe if it started a little sooner, might have been possible, but anyway, I, you know, I just want to say that I think it's really hard to overcome when you have, you know, incumbents, when you have a, you know, a, a kind of a, a county, you know, quasi governmental chamber of commerce, you know, kind of helping a candidate, I, I just think it's hard. And so then when you have someone that close and I do think, you know, Tracy's campaign, I mean, he just, you know, he, he works with families day to day and social services, you know, mentors youth, I just think it's a different perspective and it's not because of race. I think it's a different part of the community that's not really represented. I know that we talk about issues all the time on this council, but the homeless in particular has been, you know, foremost, but I just think it's, it's unfortunate that we have a result that, you know, that leaves out a voice that, you know, I think represented a part of the community that's just not on this council. So I just want to say that and I, I mean, you know, not to detract from, you know, the, the people that, that, you know, were elected, but I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from John.
You know, I wasn't going to say anything, but those last two comments are just, they're insulting to Jackie. Believe it or not, and I know this is hard to believe for people, an incumbent can lose, go figure. And no one sat around when Kara won and said, you know, this is some sort of travesty of justice here. I mean, you know, the other thing too is, you're going to feed those ballots into the same computer that counted them the first time. You think, yes, seventeen votes is not a lot of votes, but or eighteen or whatever it ended up being, but it's a lot actually. Those numbers don't move that much most of the time when they have recounts. And I just think it's amazing how these people never seem to know what time it is. You know, recounts are part of elections. The minute that I didn't have enough votes, I got ahold of a bill and said, hey, what's up? And he said, John, just hold on, there's lots of counting, blah, 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 blah. And then, you know, the numbers got to a place and I went, well, that ain't going to happen. So, you know, congratulations Jackie, you did a great job. And this idea that somehow, once again, with these people, there's always a cabal, there's always some extenuating circumstances, you know what, Mr. Bunch didn't get enough votes, that's how this game is played. The next time he runs again, maybe he gets enough votes, but this time he didn't and there was nothing else in there. So, yuck, anyway, congratulations to the winners, condolences to the losers, I know how you feel. Thank you.
Thank you John.
Now taking public comment from May J Grant.
Good evening.
Hello, I think I accidentally pressed that, I meant to speak in a later item, so I'll get back to you guys later.
No problem, thank you.
Now taking public comment from Kirk Smith.
Evening Kirk.
Good evening. I just wanted to share some of John Corici's comments, but also the concern that there's really no need to besmirch or attack any of these people because the concerns about vote counts are understandable. Like John, I've watched vote counts. Some of you will remember Measure I a few years ago on a sales tax increase. At one point, the preliminary count, it was ahead by about five votes or something like that and then lost by eight. So those election results can be close. It would be helpful to instead of attack the suspicions people have, to just clear them up. There are special procedures the Elections Office uses to verify. They are required by state law to go back and do a sample count to make sure that there's no mistakes. And when I watched it one time, there was one ballot that was off. Why? Because someone signing the ballot, pulling it out, didn't finish filling the spot out, it was not completely left black. So that's why that vote was changed. But it's, it's human to wonder when it gets that close and the explanations, as John points out, are very reasonable and it does happen. But I think that's the best way to address it, other than talking about these people and there's always going to be a cabal. Anyway, I'm thankful you fixed the microphone because I always like to hear the strong, clear, articulate voice of Mark Acuna, which I have not heard much of for several months because of the phone, that I'm glad you now cleaned up the microphone. That's why I added these comments. Thank you.
Thank you Kirk.
No more public comment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments, we have a first and a second, any further comments from council? All right, see none, roll call vote please.
Mayor Sarah Gosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And we will go on to item three point four and that's the oath of allegiance for public officers required by Article twenty, section three of the California Constitution, chapter eight, division four, title one of the California Government Code. And again, this is Regina for us this evening.
Thank you Mayor Sarah Gosa, I'll have you and Jackie, go ahead and join me over by the flag and I will give you the oath of. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, say your name.
Aye, my sister.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Welcome back.
Okay, air hug.
Air hug. We'll go ahead and take any public comments for item three point four.
Public comment, oh, yeah. So now taking public comment for item three point four, yeah, public comment from Wendy Thomas.
Good evening Wendy.
Oh, good evening Mayor Sarah Gosa. I would just like to offer a hearty congratulations to both you and Councilmember Jackie Noe. You both deserve this seat richly. Certainly Mayor Sarah Gosa, you have shown your service to our city over your, your last couple of years. And Councilmember Noe, that has a good ring to it, doesn't it? You have been preparing for this role for decades. You have given tirelessly, tirelessly to the city. You were doing vegetation management in the city with our, our city crews long before it was a thing. And you have worked tirelessly with our police department to keep our trails safe and managed and you have just, your service to our city has been quiet and strong and consistent. So you have earned this seat and can't wait to see what you do with it. So congratulations to both of you, delighted to welcome you aboard.
Thank you Wendy. And congratulations again to you Wendy. We're waiting for you to take your seat here in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now taking public comment from Ruth Michelson.
Hi.
Good night. Good evening Ruth.
Good evening, City Councilmember Jackie Noe, I would also like to welcome you and congratulate you for being in this position of responsibility to represent all of us, both residents of the city and those of us who have businesses in the city, as much of the work that you will do does affect us downtown merchants, so welcome. And also as a city council member, I hope that you will help to enforce one of the statements that I, I read in the public comment portion when people call in, which says, you are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. And so as a new council member, I hope that you will enforce that as also those who sit on the council and it continues to surprise me that someone who used to sit on the council doesn't remember that. And it continues to surprise me that someone who used to sit on the council doesn't remember that rule. So thank you again. I want to welcome you, and I know it's a lot of hard work you have ahead of you, and best of luck. Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Thank you, Ruth.
I see no more public comment.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and close public comment in item 3.4. Jackie, welcome to the 2020 version of our, our diet, our COVID diet. And, and there'll be a short seating for you here too as well, because we are now going to adjourn for 20 minutes, Placerville, so that we can, in an abundance of caution, because of COVID, we're going to go back to our, our virtual meetings. And so we're all going to be heading home and jumping on our computers to do the rest of the meeting from, from home. So thank you for your patience, and we will be back in 20 minutes. Thank you.
So we're going to go ahead and reconvene this meeting of the city council at 7:14. And we will move to item four, which is the closed session reports. And Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, with regard to items one and two, labor negotiations on the closed session agenda, the council did not take reportable action. Item three was taken off the agenda and not discussed in closed session.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. Moving on then to item five, adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
First, second, any changes? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, posed. All right, seeing none. The agenda is adopted. So we'll move right along to item six. These are announcements and presentations to the public. Item 6.1, which is employee services recognition. And then this is our city manager, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is always an honor. It's a little bit different here. We'd love to have our employees here to present them with these awards. Each year, we award employees, recognize employees for their service in 10, 15, and 20-year increments. And so I will simply announce these employees tonight. I don't, I'm not aware that any of them are on the line. If any of their department heads wish to say something, they can, but I will announce these. First one, I guess, is get to announce myself. I've, I've been here 10 years now, just so you know.
Well, and Cleve, we, I should have given this to you while I was there with you, but here's your 10-year certificate of appreciation and your, your gift certificate. So Cleve, thank you very much for all that you do for the city. I've had the honor of working with you for the last couple of years in this, in this role, and then before that, I'm planning commission. But again, thank you for all the leadership that you have and for hitting your, your 10-year anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So these others that I'll run through just, just quickly. Candace Bernardi in our finance department, 15 years. Patricia Elhage, 15, also finance. Suzanne Prunk, 15 years, also finance. And then Julianne Shackelford in our police department has been here 15 years. And Jim Lane in our community services department, specifically Parks, has been here 20 years. These certificates will be given to each of these employees. We're grateful for them, the service that they've provided to the city, and will continue to provide for the city. We look forward to working with them, so.
Thank you, Cleve, and thank you to, to everyone that's had an anniversary. It's, as was mentioned earlier, I mean, we're at a, an all-time low almost of, of city employees, and so everyone that's working today is doing a lot more. You know, we're, we're wearing a lot more hats as well. So we want to thank everybody. You know, the city doesn't run with a city council or does a city manager. It takes everybody, and, and they've done a terrific job for us. I just want to say thank you in sort of group context to everybody, and, and, you know, I wish we could have had everybody at city or at town hall today so we could do this, but under the circumstances, we'll make sure at a, at a future meeting to be able to thank everybody in person as well. And I'll open up if anyone else has any other comments. Oh, yes, Kara.
I, I would just like to echo those comments and, and recognize just how much work that our staff does. And this has been a difficult year where everyone's had to do extra work and, you know, make a lot of adjustments. And it's, it's unfortunate that we can't honor the commitments that these folks have made face to face and that we have to do it in a setting. But it, it goes without saying that we really appreciate you and, I mean, all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all these folks, and I, I just want to highlight the number of years that all these folks have been with us. So what does that say for the city? We're a pretty good outfit to work for.
Yep. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for the opportunity. You know, it is truly important to the city to have people that are here for quite some time. And, and the, the knowledge that they carry forward through the years helps us run efficiently, smoothly, and and it, it's that history that helps us not, well, maybe not make some of the same mistakes twice, as well as that history helps them serve our community better. And we are very fortunate to have people that have stuck around here for a long time, that love this community, that loves the city, and that, and that really, it shows up in their work and it shows up in their longevity. So I express my appreciation for their, for their time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Noe.
Jackie, you're muted.
Jackie, you're still muted.
Talking to myself. I just really wanted to appreciate and acknowledge, you know, we have four people with 15 years, somebody with 20 years, Cleve's like the newbie with 10 years, and it's just really significant, and I really do appreciate all their work because, as you've all said, you know, it really helps the city run smoothly and keeps us moving quite well, and just my deepest appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, we're going to move on. So item 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4 are all receiving files, but I do want to ask the council if anyone had any questions of Chief Wren, Chief Pordero, or Ms. O'Connell on either the police report, the fire report, or the public records request. Uh, yes, Councilmember Borelli.
I don't have anything specific to ask them, but I think it's appropriate to acknowledge what outgoing Councilmember Acuna had to say about the fire situation during this last, you know, supposed storm, that we didn't have any incidents. So I think that we need to repeat that.
Thank you. Well said. Uh, yes, Councilmember Taylor.
I had one question for Chief Pordero. On the third page of the, the fire report, top chart, the medical aid, actually the top and bottom chart, the medical aid for November is quite a bit more than it has been, and I was just wondering if there's anything you can say about that trend of.
Yeah, thank you, and good evening, council. With regards to that, yes, we have seen quite a, a significant intake, not only in City Placerville, but the rest of the, the district and the county. There are quite a few more COVID-related calls that we're responding to. It's quite frequently that you'll hear the crews dispatched to a potential COVID call. So there has been a, an uptick and almost kind of back to where those numbers normally be. But that is, that is very good observation. It's gotten quite a bit busier for us.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on to item 6.5, which are brief comments by the city council. And I'll start with Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, if I could, please, just before you move on, perhaps you need to, even though those are receiving files, see if there's any public comments. I don't see any, but just.
Absolutely, sure.
Public comment is open for items 6.2. It'll be 6.2, 6.3. These are the police report or the November Fire Station 25 Run Report, or even the public records request report. So 6.2, 6.3, or 6.4. If you're joining by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you're joining by your computer, you can just press the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen. Everybody will have three minutes to comment, and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Mr. Mayor, I see no public comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, and thank you, Cleve, for the reminder on that. So we'll go ahead to brief comments by a city council. And, and actually, you know what? Because we didn't, I didn't actually do this after 3.4. And so I'm actually going to go to Councilmember Noe first, because, because I probably should have had her speak after 3.4. So, Councilmember Noe.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I wanted to thank everyone for the warm welcome, and I wanted to thank all the voters for placing their trust in me to do this job, and I'm excited to be here and ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Borelli.
I just want to, again, I know we talked about it the last couple of meetings, but I just want to thank everyone who's involved with decorating our town. Coming home tonight, it's just, it just, you know, we're under these unfortunate circumstances. It's almost like, God, is it really Christmas? And you go downtown and it really is. And I just want to, you know, reiterate and just thank everyone that was involved in getting, you know, having, helping to get that going again. And, and I, and I also want to congratulate Jackie. And welcome to the fray. It's going to be a pleasure. I know just having you on board and serving with you, and congratulate you, Mr. Sarah Goza. And, and I'm so happy that you were re-elected, so thank you.
And thank, thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, well, first, I also want to congratulate you and Jackie. Welcome to the council and congratulations on the election. I want to recognize everyone that ran, and I do want to recognize Tracy, who had a really positive campaign, and it was a very close election, and I, I just hope that he chooses to, to stay involved in the city, and he would be a welcome voice in, in any effort that he, he can put into different commissions and committees. This has been a, a wild year, and this is the last meeting of the year, so I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the monumental effort and sacrifices that have been made by all of this year. You know, the parents that have had to leave their careers in order to care for kids at home. Business owners who forfeited their own paychecks in order to provide for employees. Teachers who drastically had to change how they teach. Healthcare workers who have been on guard all this time, and all of you that have chosen to wear masks, even when, you know, perhaps the, the, your personal risk was low, but in order to slow the spread and protect others. Our city staff who have had to completely change the way they provide service and maintain transparency to the public. You are all heroes, and I'm wishing you all the best possible for this holiday season. With layoffs and unemployment from this pandemic have created more need in our community for charitable services. Meanwhile, social distancing has made volunteering really difficult for some. So if you're able to volunteer, please do so. Housing Eldorado is in desperate need of volunteers, as are many other really important community organizations. I want to thank the many people that generously contributed to the annual Toys for Tots program to benefit children in need during this holiday season. This year, these gifts are more important than ever. It is disheartening that in this moment, especially with how, you know, our downtown is struggling and everybody is struggling, that some would co-op this toy drive to stage a photo PR stunt to further an ideology that does not represent the residents of Placerville. No doubt, this staged PR stunt will deter shoppers and tourists and hurt our businesses, tarnish the reputation of the city, and act as a recruitment tool for this group. For all that emailed the city directly, the city and the city council, I want to thank you for your civic engagement and for sharing your concerns. And for those that spread this photo online, along with the narrative that the Placerville Police Department or the city welcomed or encouraged this group to host this event, please don't let these guys trick you into distributing their content for them. This is exactly what they want. We are all personally responsible for the divisiveness and misinformation that we spread and the consequences that it has. I, I feel like we, as a council, had an opportunity in August to take decisive action and get ahead of this, and that we failed to do so. And until we do, I believe this will continue to be a place where conservative, alt-right, and white supremacists clash with the left at a detriment to our community well-being and economic development. I hope that when this comes up again, before the council, we'll have the collective wisdom to move things forward. In the meantime, I will be requesting tonight, under future agenda items, that we make a proclamation to denounce racism, hate, and extremism. That is all for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Vice Mayor Thomas. Oh, you're still on mute, Dennis.
Well, I, thank you. It's a, well, I think Councilmember Taylor summed up the whole year quite well. And I, and I appreciate her acknowledgement of the efforts that have gone in this year to really, you know, survive and to, and in some cases thrive through this, through this program. I know that our businesses throughout the town and county have suffered, and it is, it's a collective effort of our community that has allowed this to, has allowed many businesses to, to exist and to continue, stay, stay afloat. So with that, thank you for that. I did attend the Eldorado County Transportation Commission Board Meeting this, in the last couple of weeks. In there, I, I asked, and I've, and I've been bringing this issue forward for a couple of meetings now, a couple of months, and I have, I am looking to, to further open up conversations with all of the people, all of the affected parties that, that, that put, one, traffic on Highway 50, and two, with Cal Transit runs that manages Highway 50. So it's, it's a collaboration between, you know, all the way from, from Chanel School Road east to the state line, and everybody within that area. And so I am working, and I'll be asking the, I also will be bringing it, an item forward later on to, for future agenda items, to discuss, to, to have an opportunity to discuss what it looks like for the city to engage in that process. And, and then, when it comes to the events that happen at the Bell Tower Toys for Tots, you know, what I'm seeing is what our community really resembles, and that is all the people that are showing up to, to denounce it, to show the love that they have for our community, and that's truly who our community is. And I, I don't want to belabor this point. We're going to talk about this a lot, but I want you to know that I, that I have heard, I appreciate, I'm with those people that, that show the true meaning of community and the true meaning of the, of the true heart of our community by, by showing the love and care that we have in, in a very meaningful way. So, and that's by your voice. It's not by just us five up here saying it. People keep saying, well, they want us to say something. We will. Don't worry. It's your voices that really, in our whole community, that truly sends the message about who we are. And that's what our newspapers need to hear, television needs to hear, and not give these, not give these guys airtime that talk about, that show, that have shown symbols of hate. So with that, thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, council, and congratulations, Jackie. And, and also congratulations, Mayor Sarah Goza.
Thank, thank you, Dennis. And, yeah, for my, wanted to just thank everybody again for, not only for the Christmas tree lighting. Christmas tree lighting, for holiday tree lighting and also for the, all the trees that go up along Highway fifty. It's, you know, it was a little bit different this year because of social distancing. We had to do it virtually, but I thought it was great that the faith community came together, Al and Dennis, certainly you are a big part of this as well and you know, in, in our city staff. Just a lot of work went into it to see that happen. I thought it was great to, to have, I mean, the band was phenomenal up there with, when they were singing Christmas carols and it was a, you know, a small, much smaller version of what we would normally do. But it really was a sense of community and, and I, and I think that stands in stark contrast to, you know, what unfortunately happened during Toys for Tots. And, you know, that's the Placerville that I know, that's the Placerville that I love. You know, we were all there together at, at the tree lighting as well as we were all, you know, the service organizations and different groups putting up trees along Highway fifty. That sense of community is fantastic. And I think that's, that's the Placerville that we know is out there and, and, and that's what, what I know Placerville to be. And so, you know, people want to spread hate or do different things. That's not us. You know, we'll, we'll have, we'll hear more about this, but I just wanted to, to make that comment and again to, to thank everybody that was involved, both in the, the tree lighting as well as the, the trees along Highway fifty. So with that, we will go ahead and move on to item seven, which is public comments. And this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter, not on the agenda and that is within the subject matters, subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And we will start with item seven point one, written communications. Do we have any, I know we've, we've all seen, received a lot of emails, I know, on the Toys for Tots. But anything else, Mister Morris or Miss O'Connell on written communication?
For me, just, just those items that you received on, on those issues at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and just on a quick note on that, I know all of us are receiving those. I think I, I probably responded to about twenty-five of those yesterday. And today is a little bit more difficult to get to all of them as we prepare for a council meeting, but know that those emails are being read and seen by, by this council collectively as well as, as city staff. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. So we'll go ahead and move on to item seven point two, and oral communications.
All right, public comment is, and I wasn't for item seven point two. I just want to remind everybody, you have three minutes to speak and I will remind you when you are at about thirty seconds. We will start with Zoom user. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. It's Mandy Rodriguez. I felt very lucky to be on here first because I have a, um, a few things to address. I'd like to, I might take, I might take five minutes, but I'll try to keep it as short as I can. Um, last month I sat down to do an interview with Stacy from Toys for Tots on Foothill Seven. You may have seen it. During that interview, she told me that Toys for Tots was down a huge amount of money due to COVID. I decided to help Toys for Tots by using my local social media presence to help. I created a flyer that read Patriot Toy Drive. Why? Because I didn't want to get into trouble for copyright infringement. I wrote decorate your cars and drive down Main Street. Social distancing, right? Support local businesses. Celebrate Christmas with your community. My intentions were pure and they were to help Toys for Tots, okay? Um, Saturday was the event. Many people showed up and had a wonderful time downtown shopping, buying, donating toys for, to Toys for Tots. I filmed many random cards on my live videos, people, Jeep clubs, several bike clubs, and yes, the Proud Boys. They were all happy and brought lots of toys. The purpose of the Toys for Tots drive, okay? Any group could have shown up. There wasn't specific groups that were asked to come. Anyone could have showed up. Black Lives Matter could have showed up. The Rural Resistance could have shown up, okay? But the people who showed up, showed up, okay? They were all happy, polite. I said that. The clubs all took pictures. Proud Boys got together as well for a group photo. After they dropped off a truckload, two truckloads of toys. Well, apparently some people were offended by the Proud Boys okay sign. I'm not here to debate that with you. I'm not a Proud Boy, okay? It's not my place. Later that night, an Antifa social media group from Sacramento stole my video, cropped out a, a lot of people, and since it's so important to everybody, people of color, Latinos, blacks, Filipinos that were in that video, okay? And it was all social media. I'm gonna keep going. Let me finish. I really, I deserve to have this time with you guys, okay? So, um, it got over social media. It went everywhere. All of you know me. Every one of you on City Council knows me to want, to some extent. You may not like me. You may not agree with me, okay? But you could have easily picked up the phone to call me, but you didn't. Instead, you put out a one-sided statement and said it was a political bet.
Three minutes.
Let me finish. I'm gonna take my five. This is very important. I just.
Sorry about that, Mister Mayor. Everybody gets three minutes. We were gonna move on to caller seven one one. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, caller seven one one.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of my family. I'm a black man who, and a business owner with amazing customers in Placerville and Eldorado County. So first, I'll start with reminding the council of some of the events that have taken place in 2020. This summer, peaceful protesters who were black indigenous people of color were specifically targeted with racial epithets. Other protesters received, were threatened with getting their throats cut. Now, we have the Proud Boys event, no less promoted by a person who was running for a seat on this area council. Also this summer, a racial slur was spray painted on a bridge by Sleepy Hollow. A few years ago, a barbershop in downtown Placerville prominently displayed a Colin Kaepernick doll hanging from a noose. And let's not forget about the white supremacy material being passed out at stores downtown. And also let's not forget about the business owner in Cameron Park who left death threats on the Black Lives Matter Sacramento message line. So, interestingly, the council mentioned the Christmas trees along Highway fifty and the Black Lives Matter topper on one of the trees is gone. So there's plenty that we don't know about and as the saying goes, for every cockroach you see, there's twenty you don't see. Placerville is a county seat and bad things that happen in the county reflect negatively on the city. Unfortunate, but it is what it is. For all the good people who live here and for all the good deeds done here, all it takes is a few bad incidents to destroy a reputation. I'm here to tell you that Placerville's reputation is teetering. Now, right now, when anyone asks me my opinion on Placerville, you know what I tell them? Don't go to Placerville. It's not safe. Eat at Red Hawk on the way to Tahoe. Stop in Eldorado Hills on the way to SAC. Get gas in Cameron Park. Don't move here. It doesn't benefit me in any way to say these things. In fact, it takes money out of my pocket. But I can't in good conscience risk someone's safety and well-being. So as much as I appreciate Police Chief Rand and Mayor Zaragoza denouncing the Proud Boys incident, these statements are just whispers getting lost in the noise. The council needs to take this more seriously. Do you want Placerville to be known as a racist town?
Thirty seconds.
An unchallenged town? Thank you. The town that you should pass by on the way to Tahoe? How many businesses here can withstand another ten percent drop in revenue because people are afraid to come here? If none of that matters to you, continue doing what you're doing. React to incidents with weak public statements that are forgotten in a week or take matters into your own hands and take action. Do something. If you don't know what to do, form a committee on diversity. Listen to their suggestions.
Three minutes.
Close town halls and close committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll hear from caller seven two four. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Go ahead, caller seven two four.
Um, I'd like to make a point that you guys took an oath to defend the Constitution and those who choose to use their First Amendment right should have the opportunity to do such. What happened on Saturday was a bunch of guys wanted to show their support for Toys for Tots. Many of them are veterans and we are a very diverse group. And it's very saddening that some of these men were in the Marine Corps and actually contributed to Toys for Tots long before last Saturday. While, while these guys, these fine men were donating four thousand dollars worth of gifts to Toys for Tots, BLM and Antifa were in downtown Sacramento destroying things, about twenty thousand dollars worth of damage. I'm gonna leave it there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll hear from caller, call-in user seven. Go ahead.
Go ahead, call in user seven.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Awesome, sweet. So I'd like to start off by saying that I am one of those United States Marine Corps veterans that the previous caller was just talking about. I went and fought in a war and killed people for this country so that we could all have the right to express ourselves and love America and love our freedoms. So I want to start off by saying that. I want to also say that I am a Proud Boy and I'm proud to be a Proud Boy. We represent the best parts of America. We're patriots. We love our country. We love our children in this country. We want them to be happy and healthy. We donated two truckloads full of toys to this toy drive. While Antifa and Black Lives Matter were destroying the city of Sacramento, throwing bombs at people, throwing bombs at the police, throwing eggs at people, throwing bottles at people. We come to do good and give toys to needy children and you six sadistic pieces of shit decide to twist it all up and make us the bad guys. You should all be fucking ashamed of yourselves.
Move on to next caller. We're not gonna have anyone using foul language or doing that. It's, if you do that, we're gonna automatically drop you.
All right, caller JF, go ahead. Unmute yourself, please.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I think it's absolutely disgraceful that this is even a topic of conversation. These guys showed up and it was there for the kids. They weren't there to make a statement. They weren't there to do anything fucking crazy. The pictures they take are usually for themselves. I know, because I'm one of those guys. I cannot believe that in America, we have terrorists burning down our cities. Yet people who stand and protect those people who are out there trying to exercise their rights and people who come through donations, food drives, children's drives, clothing drives are treated like animals. Now, everybody calls the Proud Boys racist. They call them homophobic. How can that be when most of our, most of the people who belong to the fraternity are people of color? We also have an entire branch of Proud Boys called the Rainbow Boys. They're all gay. So people have no idea what they're talking about. They listen to the news media, which lies to them on a consistent basis. And they believe the stupid stuff that they hear on TV. Now, where are we at with this? We're having a conversation in a city council meeting because a bunch of guys showed up and donated toys. How ridiculous is this? And the, the one caller talking about, oh, all these peaceful protesters. Peaceful protesters don't burn down buildings, don't attack cops, don't throw bombs, don't throw Molotov cocktails. Stop lying. These people are terrorists. Thank you.
Keely Link, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, I just wanted to call and say that I was there that day and I responded to Mandy's wonderful flyer and I brought my daughter. And it was fantastic. It was the greatest time we've had in a long time since all of this happened. And to see all of the people come, including the Proud Boys come with all of those toys, it, you know, put a little tear to my eye. I thought it was fantastic. It was so wonderful, the community coming together. My daughter had a fantastic time and they actually even gave her a little stuffed elephant. And it was, it was a wonderful event. I even posted a picture of it on Facebook on my personal page. And I was shocked to learn that people actually took that page, that picture of the Proud Boys in the background and my daughter in the picture and spread it all over in the, in, all over that Facebook, saying negative things about white supremacy and children being involved with white supremacy. It was, it was horrific and I just, I felt horrible for the Proud Boys. They were doing a wonderful thing and for them to get ostracized like that, it was totally uncalled for. You know, they're a multi-racial group. And they've also given a ton of support to the Freedom Angels down at the Capitol and, and a lot of protection. When I was there and I felt threatened, they walked me to my car and the leader, one of the founders of our Freedom Angels, she's Hispanic. You know, she's not white and so, I mean, this, this group is not a white supremacy group. They're a patriot group that offers help, protection, community. It's, it's a wonderful thing. It's just a shame. And I just want to say that it's a shame the way it's being spun. It's a shame for you guys for spinning it. You know, your comments prior to this was really shameful and, you know, Mandy Rodriguez, she's a wonderful part of this community and she deserves an applause, you know? She did a great thing and it really helped a lot of kids. So it's just horrible. Thank you.
Barbara Driscoll Rogers, go ahead.
Good evening. I want to thank Kara. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Barbara.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank Kara for the comments regarding what happened on Saturday. I agree with her one hundred percent. This is what really bothers me as the last Admin Secretary to the last Chief of the Placerville Fire Department. I get a little incensed when I see this stuff going on at the historic bell tower. I'm a bit passionate and maybe a bit possessive about the history of the fire service. Now, I, I'm listening to all the people talk. There's no reason for these people to come on like the one guy and use the foul language. I also hear from these people that they think their side is right and the other side is wrong. Well, you know, there you go. So what I want to say is, if this okay sign is not connected to white supremacy or racism, and I've done a lot of research, then why was that group standing in front of the bell tower flashing the sign? What was, somebody explain to me why, in that group, why? Some of these people I know and I'm appalled and I'm disgusted because it's bringing down the county. It's bringing down the city. Now, I think it's a wonderful thing that they did. But believe me, I've been here forty-four years. There have been many people and many groups that have given to the community. But this group feels they are the only ones that have ever done anything. Well, that's not true. People have gathered and given, I belonged, we belonged to the Cameron Park Corvette Clubs. We participated in the parades. We brought toys. Hundreds of people brought toys. So this year's a little different because of the pandemic. And I heard from people downtown that were angry that, of what was going on. I heard people couldn't get through town, you know, coupled with the mess at the bell tower and then, and the, the noise of the motorcycles was horrific. So what I'm gonna say to you is what I said to the board this morning. You all need to get together with the Board of Supervisors, the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department and you all need to take action and figure out how to bring our community together.
Thirty seconds, Barbara.
Thank you. You know, I know you have a tough job to do, but this hatred has got to stop on both sides of the spectrum. And I don't want to hear about Antifa in Sacramento. That's not here. But let's just all try to get along and have somewhat of a blessed holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take public comment from Dominic. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Awesome. So, yeah, I just wanted to talk about the Toys for Tots thing and, you know, it seems like. And you know, it seems like a lot of good people, you know, they brought toys and donated a lot to the charity. Meanwhile, you have Antifa and Black Lives Matter destroying property, cars smashing windows, slashing tires downtown Sacramento. And I heard the last caller say, you know, this is not Sacramento in regards to your town of Placerville. But if you think it's not coming to your town anytime soon, you're daydreaming. They're bringing it to your city when they need to. And the Proud Boys seem like the only ones who are fighting back. And I'll tell you this much, the things that they believe are minimal government, maximum freedom, anti-political correctness, anti-drug war, closed borders, anti-racial guilt, anti-racism, pro-free speech, pro-gun rights, glorify the entrepreneur, venerate the housewife, reinstate the spirit of Western chauvinism. Tell me which part of that is objectionable to you. Thank you.
We'll take public comment from Cheryl. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my call. I'm a local teacher and I just wanted to thank the mayor for his clear and concise message against racism. I really appreciated that. I think that's what our children need to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nayja Grant, go ahead.
Nayja, go ahead.
Sorry, didn't realize I needed to unmute. It just, let's see, seems like there's so much to say. After some of the previous comments, I think the best use of my time would just be to point out that, you know, making some of these hand signs, I have no doubt some of the people among the Proud Boys don't much recognize or maybe care about the history in these signs. But we know what the association with esoteric hand signs and little, it's, there's a certain energy to it that's hard to ignore. And I just want to point out another quick story that earlier this summer, there were people giving Nazi salutes on Main Street and it's just highly disconcerting. It was hard to witness, hard to witness. And then the Mountain Democrat ended up publishing a picture with the salutes visible in the background and no comment was made about the horrific gesture. About no comment was made in opposition to it. I just think, I know there are many people of goodwill in Placerville. I think it's easy to overlook the signs of where some of this energy can be leading. And after having left town and then coming back after a few years, there's a noticeable difference and a noticeable increase in Confederate flags. I've seen about five Nazi references this summer, some of them blatant, some of them just online on local groups. So when the Proud Boys makes this sign, you know, they're trying to thrive on the fact that it's ambiguous and they want us to not think that it's a big deal, yada, yada. I know there are undoubtedly people among the group that maybe don't even recognize the implications, but the implications are there and we can't let this stuff rise. We just cannot, we can't afford to take that lightly. So I just wanted to add my voice and if the city council can do anything to take this stuff seriously, I know you guys don't control the whole city, can't solve all these deep rooted problems. There's so many in the city that want to make change. You guys are right there at the top to be able to lead things. Please, please take these energies seriously. It'll be very hard to deal with in coming years if this stuff continues to build as it has been. It was very hard to come back after a few years and see some of that stuff so out in the open where it used to be unacceptable. And I just want to give my voice. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Evening, Sue.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Well, I'm going to break from this whole line of things and remind us that with PG&E still scheduling power safety shows, it's past time for Placerville to get serious about our hazardous vegetation ordinance. Our major roads that would provide escape routes need to have clearance so that people could escape. Driving through tunnels of flame to survive is not what we want to see in Placerville. I invite you to imagine how you would drive through a fire to escape on whatever your evacuation route would be if given the order to evacuate. Please, let's do some cleaning up along our street right of ways now. This is the season to get it done. Placerville could be designated a firewise community and it could save on insurance premiums, might prevent some insurance cancellations, and it could save lives. And it would give people something to do. A lot of energy could go into cleaning up the excess vegetation instead of doing all kinds of other destructive things. Let's destroy the hazardous vegetation instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
We'll take public comment from call in user one. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have a two-part question. One is going to be, what makes you think that the PB is a so-called Nazi group? I'll go ahead and wait for your answer.
This isn't a question and answer session. If you want to make public comments, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make another public comment. I am a, I'm a public person that actually works in your area as search and rescue. I do a lot of lost and found in your area. I also represent Yuba City, Sutter, in different various places. And I was at your event yesterday and I didn't find anything that was disturbing of what was going on. You had bike clubs down there. You had the PBs down there. And by the way, I am a PB. I did the first degree and I did a lot of research on them before I decided I wanted to join them. And I'm very disturbed by your comment that you posted regarding they were Nazis. I just, I'm trying to find out the truth behind the matter of your statement, yet I can't find nothing. So it would be nice for you to reply to my email. I would greatly appreciate it. And that's all I got for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Stephen.
Hi, yes. Um, one second. I'm sorry. I wasn't ready for your call. Couple of things I want to touch on. I was there this weekend. And first and foremost, I want to say that LEO or law enforcement had no involvement in our picture in setting any of this up. They, they were not aware of our involvement in the Toys for Tots event. I also, hold on there. One second. Okay, so I also want to say that the picture that's been circulating online was cropped. That wasn't the original picture that we took. I'm not sure what organization or who decided to crop it and crop out all of our members. But the picture was cropped, leaving out a lot of our POC in there. Yeah, it's just frustrating. We spent all this time trying to, sorry, my dog. We spent all this time trying to portray ourselves as not racist. We accept all people. It doesn't matter if you're gay or black or Mexican or whatever. We accept everybody into our race. And here we are fighting again for, to prove that we're not racist. I just, it's frustrating that these times are so divisive that a simple toy drive where we donate two truckloads of toys doesn't get recognized for what that is. You know, just hopefully we can get past this at some point and we're seen as, you know, normal patriotic folks that we are. That's all we are. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Jonathan.
Hello, Mayor Michael and City Council. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate you on the reelection and also like to congratulate and welcome Councilwoman Noe and so glad to have her on the, on the dream team there. I understand Christmas is closing in. I think in man count, Christmas is probably, I don't know, seven or eight, maybe nine weeks away. But us men learn that Christmas is not really nine weeks away. It's two weeks away from this Friday, I believe. I wanted to read something not from Facebook, but from the grace book. That's the Bible. When I started speaking for the homeless at city council, year and a half, two years ago, one of the common speakers there said, well, since we're going back to the days of the Bible, but the Bible is more current than the Mountain Democrat that's going to come out tomorrow morning and Friday. I want to read from Matthew chapter five, one of the most famous sermons of Jesus Christ. Who knows that even though all of us are liars, all of us are sinners, all of us are hypocrites, all of us have failed to live up to what we're called to be. All of us have let not only ourselves down, but have let other people down, our families, our children, our neighbors, ourselves and our God. But Jesus in Matthew five wrote these words. He said, blessed, enviably happy are those who are poor in spirit, who know their own spiritual poverty, not pointing out others, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are those who mourn for their own shortcomings, for they will be comforted. Blessed are the meek, who don't want to rule the world, for they will inherit the earth. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for God's way of living and treating each other, for they will be filled. Blessed are the merciful, for they shall be shown mercy. Blessed are the pure in heart, for they will see God.
Thirty seconds.
Blessed are the peacemakers, not just the peace lovers. Blessed are the peacemakers. Matthew chapter five, verse nine, for they shall be called the children of God. Peace on earth and goodwill toward men of goodwill. The angel said, we bring you the most wonderful news ever announced, that unto you each one of us is born a savior in the city of David, who is Christ the Lord.
Three minutes, Jonathan.
Each person out there, you are his reason for the season. Look into your heart and let his love take the throne. God bless you all. Merry Christmas to Placerville.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, we'll move on to Tracy Doyle. Go ahead.
Hello, guys. I want to talk about Saturday and the response to it. I met Mandy Rodriguez in May and we realized that we had a lot in common as far as our convictions, our patriotism, our love of this republic. And she decided to fight to be on the council, to be representative of the people, a lot of people who agree with her and her values. She's a patriot. She has a good heart and that's where her heart was and along with all of her friends that worked together to promote the Toys for Tots. Everyone I met there was wonderful. Back in May, Mandy convinced me to go down to the Liberty Fust. And because I had been watching on Twitter what was going on in Seattle and Portland, the Antifas and the BLM groups. And I was kind of nervous to go down there. And this was even before it got really ugly. And she talked me into it. And there were some guys down there and I said, who are these guys? What are they doing? You know, what's this all about? And she told me, oh, they're a patriot group and a little bit, you know, I had never heard of them. I hadn't heard all the negative things. And I did my own research after that. And I realized, you know, I'm not here to defend a group, but what I'm here to defend is a community coming together in a wonderful event. The shops and the restaurants in Placerville were filled with motorcycle clubs. People came to town because many of us promoted the Toys for Tots. Then we hear that there was talk that people are trying to steal and have an agenda and take over an event. I mean, that was really disheartening to hear those rumors going around. It stems from, I think, the city council or the city staff. I mean, that was disgusting. And it was before it even started. They were putting this cloud over this event. $4,000 worth of toys from one club. There were four truckloads I watched. These were people there in community. They weren't there to start anything, but who is starting stuff is BLM Eldorado County. And when I saw the video of our police chief marching with them back in June, I was kind of shocked. And then to see this statement, because you know why I was shocked? Because I know CHP officers that are told to stand down at the Capitol as urine is thrown on them. Chief Rens privileged. He's privileged. He's up here in this quiet little sleepy ass town. Oops, I'm sorry. Apologize for that slip. He's up here in the sleepy town and he doesn't have urine. He doesn't have explosives. So I tell you, you know, what, I wonder how he'd feel about BLM and these hate groups, these domestic terrorists, if he was having urine thrown at him. If our businesses were being burnt down. Sacramento has been boarded up and it's a ghost town and it's not because of COVID. It's because of the riots. We like to think it only happens in Portland, but it happens in Sacramento. And Sacramento looked like Portland this Saturday. So while our Proud Boy area groups were up here donating toys and handing out candy and having a good time with people, there are Antifas and BLMs attacking.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yeah, that's all I really have to say. I mean, it's like, let's look at the big picture and stop just believing what we're told. Let's do your own research, guys.
Okay, moving on. Tony Wendell, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Tony. Hello, thank you guys very much. Hey, thanks council for your comments and for everything you do. I also want to thank the law enforcement for helping us out with a lot of folks this last couple of weeks that created some issues for us. And a special shout out to Officer Tadlock, who comes into my store all the time and makes sure that we're doing okay. The first thing I want to say is with regards to the flyer that went out, hopefully I won't get in trouble for saying this, that Mandy put out. Downtown is not an autonomous zone. We are definitely not an autonomous zone. Look that up if you don't know what I'm talking about. And now I want to say something to all the kids that saw the photograph of Santa and the Proud Boys. That's not the real Santa. He wanted me to let you all know that he's watching you and he loves everyone, but he would never do a hate hand gesture like that ever. And bonkers, we denounce racism and we denounce hate. And I hope you guys have a Merry Christmas. And even though I'm not a religious person, I want to say shout out to Jonathan because he really made me feel really good with his comments. So you guys have a great night and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Tony. You too.
Ashley Bertram, go ahead.
Good evening, Ashley.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to say, first of all, I was there Saturday. My sister and I were celebrating our mother's birthday. We had a great time. We had a wonderful time, so much fun that I raved about it on the rants and raves on Facebook. We went into many shops. We spent probably more money than we should have, but there was something everywhere. We had a very good time. When Santa came, there was a really cute little girl right behind us. She was so excited. She was so happy to see him. Everybody was really, really happy. It was a great time. People were. People were showing up to donate toys. I think, I think the clampers might have been there. I don't know. To me, they all really looked the same, right? Like all the guys just kind of looked the same. Some were fat, some were good looking, some were not so good looking. They all were very happy and they were all so proud bringing those toys. They were all so happy. And I don't mean proud as in Proud Boys, because I mean, there were many people there. But we did see the Proud Boys come in and they had their sweaters on and they were all very happy. And I'll tell you, when you say the Proud Boys were there and you're not going to be trending on Twitter because there's no, and they were saying only those toys are going to the white kids or only those toys are going to the, they weren't, they weren't like picking like who they were going to go to. They didn't care. They were just so happy that they were helping our community. They did not shout any racial slurs or cuss anybody out or show up like drunkards. They were really happy and everybody was really happy. It was just so festive. I was so happy and just, I couldn't have been, it just was a nice day, right? We were celebrating our mother who had passed away seven years ago. We go downtown every year and it just so happened that on her birthday, there was this fun Toys for Tots event. I was so excited. I am really embarrassed that people have turned this into something so nasty. I am sad that this has happened. This summer, we did watch as the police chief marched down with the Black Lives Matter and some of the city council took pictures with them. As they held signs, they held signs that all cops are bastards. And still, our town was humble and gracious to allow that to happen, right? But then something like that, the Proud Boys were there and they delivered toys. Give me a break, you guys. That's sad. That's sad that you guys have let this happen. Instead, just be happy, enjoy the time and be glad that Santa showed up. Thank you.
Sarah Saunders, go ahead.
Good evening Sarah.
Good evening. I don't live in Placerville. I have lived in the county for close to 15 years and I often shop in Placerville. And once the quarantine started, I made a promise to myself that I was going to support businesses in Eldorado County and that I would do everything I could to keep my money local. And I have been attending meetings with a couple of different groups, including a medieval group that's marched in that Christmas parade. And I noticed there's an emphasis over and over on the amount of toys that this group has given. Well, our medieval group has given quite a few toys too, and we even won a prize one year. And I can tell you that I do not feel comfortable in Placerville anymore. And I haven't for a while. The town has changed in the time that I've been here. And all of these flowery words and this sugary sweetness that I'm hearing from people, you really have a lot of disrespect for the people in this town. If you think that people don't have enough sense to go online and look up exactly what the Proud Boys is and exactly what they believe in. So you're really, you know, insulting people by that. You can give all the toys in the world to an organization that is a perfectly worthy organization, but that doesn't change what you are. The devil can quote scripture and the devil's also the most beautiful angel. So don't, you know, this is ridiculous that you would think that people would fall for this. And another thing is, we need to, when someone tells you who they are, you need to believe them. The Proud Boys emblem is, happens to be a noose with a body hanging on it. I think that that needs to be a cause for reflection for the city because you invite the things that you put out there. So thank you for the time to speak my mind.
Thank you.
Cindy, go ahead.
Good evening Cindy.
Hello. I'll be quickly, quick as I can be. I just want to say that it's a little bit scary for me to speak right now because I am a Latina in this community and a millennial and a female. And hearing what the people had to say before me is really concerning and scary. I noticed that a lot of the people from the Proud Boys group like to claim that they have a strong Latino, Latinx, Hispanic members in their group. And I just want to say that they have a voice as well. If they are so proud to be a part of you, why are they not speaking? Why do you feel like you have to speak for them? We are here. We are not a part of that community. You are trying to coin them to prove you are not racist, but maybe don't join a group that represents white supremacy. It might be easier to prove you're not racist than normalizing white supremacy. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Call in user eight, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for taking my call. My family and I were also, we're not in Placerville proper, but we are in Eldorado County. And we did come last Saturday because we did see the flyer that was distributed by, or made by Mandy Rodriguez. I am going to stop for a moment though and say something that I didn't plan on saying, which is, if there were any issues created for Tony over at whatever his candy store name is, the only issue that's been created for him is more prosperity. Every single time there is an event, he is the one that really stands to gain from it. So I, whatever he is talking about, I have no idea. But moving on, like I said, my family and I were down at the event. It was a great event. I myself am not familiar with Proud Boys or who they are or what they are. I've done more research since Saturday, since I've seen all of these stories and I've heard what you guys have said. And I've also heard sadly, what the police chief has said and the city as a whole. Now more that, the more I'm finding out, the more disappointing it is to hear you guys call them Nazis and white supremacists. And I want to start by saying, you all need to understand what defamation of character means. Because every time you use those words to describe these gentlemen, and I saw this group of people while we were down there and I was puzzled. I'm like, holy cow, who were the white supremacists that were down there? Because I saw a group of guys with whites, with Hispanics, whatever that lady was talking about. I don't know, it was a bunch of nonsense. There were Hispanics, there were black gentlemen there. It was a whole group. They all had the same sweatshirts on. And it wasn't just white people. I was perplexed when I heard that there were these white supremacists. So back to what I was saying, defamation of character, you all need to look that up. And every single person that has called, especially the lady saying that online, look it up online, see what they are, I have looked it up online. People know who she is, by the way, defamation of character. Saragossa, defamation of character. Look that up because you can be held accountable and you need to know that you can be held accountable. You cut people off, you hang up on them when they call in. It's horrible the way you treat people. And when you turn around and you say bad things and things that are lies, you will be held responsible. And Sarah goes that back to you. I know you're a graduate of APU. I'm very familiar with that university. I'm still very involved with that university. God first, you know what that means. And I certainly hope that you honor it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. It's been interesting to hear all of these calls and it does sadden me that we're so divided and we see things so very differently. We're going to have to try to find some common ground here. I'm not familiar with anyone calling these gentlemen Nazis. I don't know about that. And I don't think anyone has called them the KKK either. But I will say from just looking up the Proud Boys, they are defined as a far-right, all-male neo-fascist political organization that promotes and engages in political violence in the United States and Canada. That comes from Wikipedia. So just leave it at that. And the number of times people have brought up Black Lives Matter tonight, how many times? Fifteen times? And all the people who've brought up Black Lives Matter are people who are trying to defend the Proud Boys and say, yeah, but look at Black Lives Matter. You are really doing yourselves such a disservice because what you are saying is essentially racist. Look, what do you have against the Black Lives Matter movement? There are some outliers, like there isn't every group. And there are some people who falsely associate with that movement and are violent and do these things of, you know, property damage and dumping urine or whatever is going on with all of that. That is not the main crux of Black Lives Matter. And because you continually use it as your argument, it tells me you have something against black people. So really, I would drop that argument. You're really shooting yourself in the foot. And the other thing I want to say was, I have no doubt that these men who are at the bell tower, I've seen the pictures, I wasn't there, are, you know, they present well. They were clean cut, they brought gifts. That's great. Really, that's very nice. But I cannot be bought by gifts. I know that they are a group, look, that one, that man who called in who said, oh, Black Lives Matter is coming and your police won't protect you and we will. I don't want your protection. I don't want vigilante justice. I have trust in our law enforcement officers. And I think that's what Proud Boys is all about. I've done my reading and I, I don't think that's, and I don't think that's good for our community to be promoting people who are thinking they are going to protect us when we have law enforcement to do that. All right? And so I think that if they truly are not white supremacists, then stop using that symbol. I mean, they're doing themselves a disservice by using that symbol that everyone knows exactly what it is. So stop using it. And for Santa Claus?
Three minutes.
Claus, are we there? Okay, thank you. I hope we can find some common ground. Thank you.
Thank you Ruth.
Michelle, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah, Michelle.
So I want to start off by thanking you guys for allowing people to speak. I think that's really important. I do want to let you know, this is very emotional for me, so forgive me if my voice cracks a bit. I really want to make a clear distinction here. I've heard people talk about defamation of character. I've heard people talk about bombings and urine being thrown and Molotov cocktails and burning buildings and cars. None of that's happened here in Placerville. I will say that I am a part of BLM EDC, Black Lives Matter, Eldorado County. We are here. We have associated organizations that are working with us to support. You know, we, we're also trying to strengthen our community. You know, we've been doing food drives and clothing drives and supply drives for months now. Last weekend, there was $2,500 worth of gift cards donated to needy families, Christmas trees. But we do it quietly and we do it quietly out of fear of retaliation. Fear of retaliation for us, fear of retaliation for families that we're serving. It, it's something that really shouldn't be and needs to be addressed. You know, in terms of us, we're not looking for any glory. We really want to strengthen the community and make it a place where people of color are a part of the narrative. You know, we live here, I live here. I'm a person of color and there are times when I do not feel safe walking down the streets in this town. It shouldn't be that way. I have friends, I have family that refuse to come see me here because they quote unquote, think Placerville is a racist town. You know, I feel that there's a racist element, but I know there's a lot of really good people here. It's a beautiful place. There's beautiful people. We need to highlight that. But we also need to recognize that people of color don't feel safe here. And that's a problem. You know, it hurts business, we're a tourist economy, but worse than that, it hurts people. There's a lot more that I want to say. Forgive me, my mind and my emotions are really pumping here. And I know there's a lot of other folks who want to say something. So I appreciate the time and I hope that we can continue this conversation because I think this is something that needs to be addressed tonight, but it also needs to be addressed every day moving forward. This is not an easy topic and it's not going away.
Thank you.
Lulie, go ahead.
Hello, thank you guys for having me. I wanted to say congratulations to those candidates that won and I look forward to, to seeing you guys support our community in a good way. I want to touch back on this situation from Saturday. I want to, I've heard everybody's comments and I had 100 things I wanted to point out, but everybody's given a back and forth on each side. And, and I guess what I want to, what I want to say is, I, as well, I'm a person of color. I own a business that I run in town. And we also, like Michelle just mentioned, we serve the Latino community and the BIPOC community as well as anyone in need out of our market. And we don't publicize it. We don't go around bragging, we don't go around shirts, wearing shirts that show what we've done. We just do it in a good way for the community. Now, as far as the Proud Boys go, flashing their signs, wearing their sweatshirts with the nooses. You know, if they're good guys, if they're a good group of people, why not start your own group? Why use these well-known racial signs? I want to point out something to the city staff, the city police, the city manager, the city council. Maybe we're all wrong about the Proud Boys. Maybe we're all wrong, but you know, if we're not, I want to have you recognize something about gang recruitment. The sign that they flashed, they all did it in solidarity. And the business owner, the Santa business owner, he joined in as well with the police car in the background, with the police tent in the background, with the bell tower in the background. Now, maybe the, the local government and law enforcement had nothing to do with this, this display. But in a, in a bigger picture, if this was another group, another colored group, another white group, any group showing these behaviors like this, that would be considered gang recruitment. They have gifts, they have Santa, they're, you know, flashing their signs and they're wearing their, you know, their noose, whatever it is logo that they've put together. I don't know if that's just Hangtown Proud Boys or if that's all Proud Boys. But that, that's not acceptable. That needs to be addressed. And if you guys don't understand that, you could go ahead and call the sheriff's department because they have a clear gang enforcement task force and clear guidelines on how to recognize these types of things. And I think that's something that we really need to focus on and address. If these signs are not wrong for them, if these noose logos aren't anything negative for them, then maybe choose a different way of presenting yourself to the community. Show us who you are. We're all open and working together downtown, no matter what color we all are, those of us that get along and aren't showing these behaviors. And I hope that maybe the city can just really look at that and take a look at what it is we're dealing with here. There's a lot more in the message that happened in those pictures and in those videos than just this back and forth, the Proud Boys are good or the Proud Boys are bad or they were bringing toys or they were invited or they weren't or whatever. Those specific behaviors, those need to be looked at. They need to be, need to be squashed if they're not really the intention that they were bringing. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Jen C, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jen.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I just want to say, I do want to say Mayor Saragossa, with all due respect, I mean, for the record, you were elected since you were appointed previously. I've been in, you know, homeowners associations and that's where I've kind of had the distinction between, I've been both appointed and elected. But anyway, so, but do congratulate you, I do congratulate you on your election after being appointed. And other than that, I just want to bring this back to, I mean, if we're talking about safety and protection, I do have to bring it back to Clay Street and we have a serious safety issue. I just, you know, I, in addition to the sign that actually marks 20 miles, I mean, it says 20. It doesn't say miles per hour because it's not a speed limit, but it identifies that you should. but it identifies that you should slow down for curves. And I just want to encourage everybody on the city council to drive that street and pay attention to the curves. The whole thing is curves. The entire street, it's one swerve, S, 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 back and forth, back and forth. There's a second sign that doesn't have the numbers 20, but it's another zigzag sign. The whole street is curves and the whole street should be 20 miles per hour. And we do appreciate the presence. We appreciate that the police department has been out there doing some more enforcement. Really do appreciate that. Really appreciate the, the 25 mile per hour electronic, whatever it is, the reminder that flashes at people and tells them how fast they're going. Really appreciate this presence and acknowledgement that we need to do some traffic management. But I, I just, you know, we, the neighbors, will be just talking more about what's really, what the experience is there. And I just want to encourage you to really think about 20 miles per hour for that street. And of course, there's larger issues. And so, you know, we're going to be getting into the bridge project, getting into that whole thing, which will basically connect Pleasant Valley with, you know, Mosquito. I mean, making this thoroughfare. And we need traffic calming really badly on Clay. I, I know you guys are sick of my soapbox, but I, I just can't tell you. I mean, I'm out there talking to the people, walking their dogs and the kids and everything. It's, it's just, it's a neighborhood. It needs to be a neighborhood street. It needs to not be a thoroughfare. So thank you.
Thank you.
Call-in user five, go ahead.
Go ahead, caller five, or call-in user five.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name's Eric. I'm an El Dorado County resident for 17 years now. And I am a Proud Boy. And what I need you guys to know is there's a lot of disinformation about the Proud Boys on the internet and on left-wing media outlets like CNN and MSNBC, as well as some of our local media. I've been hearing a lot of these callers. And quite frankly, they're displaying their incredible ignorance. The hand gesture we use absolutely does not mean a noose or anything of a white supremacist nature, but means everything's going to be okay. It's not a noose, it's not a white supremacist gesture. That's all a lie. The left loves to lie about the Proud, Proud Boys constantly. And they distribute repulsive propaganda about us. Proud Boys are anti-racist, we're pro-legal immigration, we're patriots, we love our country, we love our flag, we love our freedoms. And we're also not xenophobic by any stretch. We don't care about what somebody's sexual orientation is. So we're not homophobic. And in fact, we're a very diverse fraternal organization with a mix of different races and sexual orientations. So a lot of the stuff that, you know, you want to go do some research on the internet, it's, it's lies. Why don't you talk to a Proud Boy? And you get the real information. You'll get the truth. And you know what, a lot, some of these other callers, it's like a slap in the face because we were very happy to offer $4,000 worth of toys for the Toys for Tots program because we're all family people. And most of us have children. And we wanted to help the needy families with toys for their children. Now, I, I'm just, Councilwoman Taylor and this other guy, Tony, you guys, you're brainwashed. I'm sorry to say, you're ignorant and you're brainwashed. You are safe.
Go to the next caller, please. Again, we're not going to have personal insults.
Already on it, Mr. Mayor, yes. Ally Jones, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ally.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, so I know that it says Ally Jones, but this is actually Elizabeth DeBose. I haven't met you before. Hi there, it's nice meeting you guys, or seeing you guys again. And I am here to represent the black community in El Dorado County, specifically Placerville, California. I have been doing many of the protests since the George Floyd incident and Breonna Taylor and Elijah McClain and ongoing. And I know that they are not a part of this county, but they are a part of me and they represent my sisters and my brothers who have died of police brutality. And I understand that our cops and our law enforcement is doing everything that they can. But I am still here to represent all of that. And I'm here to make sure that all of the black and brown children in Placerville remain safe. And I just want to make sure that the narrative does not get twisted on this end because everything that I have done for this community is out of love. And I do everything for, you know, for you guys and for me. And I feel like I have stepped into the shoes of something very great. And I just want to make sure that everyone is safe. And I understand and I hear that, you know, the Proud Boys are concerned because they don't want their narrative to get changed. But if you don't, you know, want to go with that narrative, then you can change it. I represent and advocate change and that is what the future has in store. So if you don't like the narrative, then change it. If you don't like it, then change it. What I am doing is because I do not like something that does represent hate and it is rooted in something that is mean and it is hateful towards people that look like me. And I love this county and I love Placerville and I want to be here and I want to stay here. And maybe one day I will run for city council and represent all of the people that look like me. But I can't do it unless we're willing to change and move forward. And we can be happy and I see that for the future. But we all need to change something and be better. And thank you so much for giving everyone the time because I really think that the youth needs to hear this. And I'm 26 years old and I grew up here and I represent the youth and the adults and everyone that's been a part of this. And I just love everyone here. So thank you for letting me do this.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Camille, go ahead.
Hi, I wanted to speak about the events on Saturday. And I just want to say that I am appalled and disgusted that these things are taking place in my hometown where I was born and where I grew up. I wanted to thank the city council for condemning the events. And I have, I have quite a few things I'd like to say addressing some of the previous callers. So as one of the previous callers has cited on Wikipedia that it's not hard to find that the Proud Boys are a far-right neo-fascist political organization. And if you read a little further on the same Wikipedia page, it says that they themselves have stated that their major focus is race and that they're rebranding intensified after White Supremacist Unite the Right Rally. So the, all the Proud Boys who are claiming that this is misinformation, I would like to ask what source, other than your own mouths, we're supposed to believe? And to the many callers who I have heard on this call saying that you attended the event on Saturday and everyone seemed happy and that they donated toys so that you were shocked and surprised that this was taken badly in your town, I would like you to consider the perspective that the reality is not simply what you see. As other callers have mentioned, there are mutual aid efforts by Black Lives Matter in this county and these things happen quietly. And they're not done for show. You can't buy immunity to white supremacy. So just because these people donated thousands of dollars worth of toys, but then they tout it as though it's something that's worthwhile, doesn't that seem like it's simply for show? It doesn't take much to see who these people really are. And to the previous callers, to Elizabeth who spoke before me, to the second caller who spoke on this call, to Cindy, I just want to say that I am sorry that the people of color in this town have to go through this. And I want you to know that you have white allies in this town, that we are here for you. And I also want to point out, the last thing that I'll say is that not a single caller of the Proud Boys have identified themselves as a person of color. They've, as another caller mentioned, they claimed they are represented by people of color, but not one has spoken out on this call tonight. That every single black Latino person of color who has spoken on this call has been against the Proud Boys and against what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller 034, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to try to speak really quickly because first I want to defend Mandy, who organized something amazing in spite of unconstitutional violation of our rights to allow children and families to participate in a Christmas celebration where people from all walks of life, which we really shouldn't have to point out, were able to participate. So first of all, you're going off of a fake narrative. You've heard directly from the Proud Boys' mouths that this is more than clear, that they're not a white supremacy group. In fact, to those of you who are so scared to be in Placerville, if this was a racist city, wouldn't they be able to proudly promote their racism? In a racist city, I think they would. But they're not. They're actually offended by the accusations. I know this isn't a question and answer, but my God, I would like to know what evidence you city council members have to state that the Proud Boys is a racist or white supremacist organization and to support any negative media about our town and our county stating that we supported white supremacists that's despicable and irresponsible as public servants to blindly accuse an organization that supports our community and your constituents. And for all of you, literally, don't cut me off for saying morons, but morons who believe that the okay sign.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Let's go ahead with Ed Ingram. Go ahead and meet yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Ed.
Congratulations to you for your election.
Thank you.
Tammy and I just want to make some comments that we appreciate what's been done, attempted for the traffic calming measures on Clay Street to this point. And just to point out that the westbound solar traffic speed limit signs not working, hasn't been working for about two weeks. Something wrong with it or needs another battery. And just a couple of suggestions that we not give up on this traffic calming measures and keep proceeding with it would be awesome. And that the speed limit of 25 should be lowered to 20, which would more accommodate the curves and the gradation of Clay Street itself. And go back to it again, just more hard signage that's enforceable and Coleman become a permanent one-way, not just a temporary indemnity, a no right turn permanent as well. And let's keep on the state of California, try to get that trip to Green Highway 50 going and see if that would help reduce a lot of this traffic congestion and staid street usage. And I just want to thank you, Mayor, again, and the city council for doing what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Caller 857, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Hey, so just, I have some actual city business. And please, an update on Mosquito Road paving possibilities for this fall. What is the trip to Green on Highway 50? When, where, and how will this, what's going to happen? Last council meeting, the city manager mentioned it's going to do a trial run. What do the residents need to expect? I mean, are they going to open up east-westbound Highway 50 for like 15 minutes? We're all going to be sitting there waiting? You need to get some public knowledge out there on what to expect. Another, I would, a request and ordinance quickly that bans anything from Communist China into items that you adopt, like cellphone towers, data, anything that could be linked back to Communist China. I think I would like to see you ban it. Repeaters, the Placerville Police Department trailer that you're going to buy is that American-owned, Communist China-owned, who owns all that data? The Toys for Tots thing, I just, I'm completely at loss for. I have no idea what happened. I would hope to think that you judge people on their actions and not innuendo and defamation. If, if people brought four truckloads of toys and nothing really happened except donating toys, that's, that's not evil. And so I, I did have a problem hearing that the city council was not defaming, but saying the Proud Boys were wrong. But did anyone say anything when Wendy and Dennis Thomas took a knee with Black Lives Matter? And Black Lives Matter actually is a group that is a self-avowed Marxist group that wants the downfall of America. So how do you, how do you complete that? If you're going to attack one group, but not attack the other, that seem like polar opposites, either you stay out of it or you condemn both of them for extremism. I don't know. Something to think about. Thank you.
Eric Nacita, go ahead.
Yeah, how y'all doing? Thanks for having this meeting. I just wanted to, it was like perusing the web. And what I came across is pretty interesting is I found out that the Hells Angels are having a toy drive. I keep hearing about all these toys that are being brought. And, you know, I don't think that the toy drive is a ticket to anything. I'm not saying that people should be banned from being downtown. I think that violates constitutional rights. But I, I do think that there's a lot of misinformation. And I also see that the FBI, that's Bill Barr's FBI, has categorized the Proud Boys as an extremist group. These are the same folks that our president said to stand by until they're needed. So I, I want to, let's say what Proud Boys really are. They, they get their name Proud from white pride. And anybody who thinks that that hand symbol is an okay symbol, that's being so disingenuous. That's clearly the white power gang symbol. So let's just be like realistic here. So, but again, you know, people have different beliefs. And I don't think that as much as a lot of people would like to have different groups, whether Proud Boys want BLM banned or BLM wants Proud Boys banned, it's not constitutional. But what I would like everybody to understand is that people in Sacramento and San Francisco are seeing this turmoil in our town and they are being afraid to come here. We thrive on, on, on tourism. As much as we hate to bash on flat, as much as we love to bash on Flatlanders, that is our bread and butter. So I think we all need to put a little effort into putting a positive face on our town, even though there's a dark underbelly. And I'd also like to implore the city council to put a three-way stop at Cedar Ravine and Pacific. It's crazy there. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go to the next caller, I know there are some people raising their hands for a second time. There's only going to be one, you'll only get one, one public comment. So just, if you raise your hand a second time, you will not be called on. Thank you. Go ahead, Regina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll continue with Tiffany. Go ahead.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening.
Hello. Hi. Hi, yeah, I just want to say something. I, I hope you city council members are taking everything into consideration that has been said tonight and really going over everything in the past few days that's happened because it's very important that our town goes in the right way. And I don't think anything that happened this weekend was a problem. I think everything was a blessing. I think there's too much finger pointing and not enough back patting. So yeah, that's, that's where I'm at with that. And my name is Ronnie Merrill, for the record. So yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Tan Guy, go ahead.
Hi, I have been a Proud Boy for over four years. I joined after the attack on the Trump rally in San Jose. I thought the police were not protecting us and I thought, you know, we gotta figure out a way where we can protect ourselves going to patriotic events. We are mostly among the 73 million Trump voters in this country. We're not bad people. We work. We have families. We love our communities. Anyone who was in Placerville on Saturday would have noticed that we had a fair few minorities in our midst and we, we don't count them up as tokens or put any special pedestal out for them. We just assume they're our buddies. They're us. We don't ever talk about white supremacy subjects or how great white people are. These are patriotic guys, the minority guys that you could have seen in any pictures. A lot of them are veterans. They have the same feeling about the country that we do. They're not, we're not bean counters and we're certainly not racist. We don't ever talk about anything like that. As a matter of fact, as a former veteran, I can say that anyone who ever espouses white supremacy or Nazi admiration is pretty much immediately booted from the group. And that might be hard for some people to fathom, but it is a fact. There is a great deal of hostile media out there about us, but it's false, like a lot of the media stories that are around. As far as the Black Lives Matter subject, the comparisons, the yardstick between our group and their group, I would encourage anyone to take a bar graph and tally up how many businesses the Proud Boys have burned down, how many assaults we have committed against innocent people, killing anyone, whatever. We don't spread mayhem anywhere. We're law abiding citizens. We have, for the most part, we have clean criminal records. We have children we want to raise in a nice country like we grew up in. And I think it's fair to compare us to other groups and say, you know, actually, I'd like to see anyone show where we have a history of real violence outside of self-defense. We are frequently attacked at patriotic rallies. For some reason, we let if there's a Black Lives Matter rally or a gay pride rally and we have gay members too, I stay home. I don't need to go down to their rallies and try and sabotage them or confront them or humiliate them. I figure they have every right to enjoy the First Amendment just as we do, but somehow they come to our rallies and do physically assault us. They destroy our vehicles. $20,000 damage was done in Sacramento this weekend for the patriots who were attending the rally at the Capitol. A rally where they weren't attacking anyone, they were mining.
Sorry, you have 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Oh yeah. And as far as the Hangtown chapter in Placerville, the people saying anything bad or negative about that, they don't, they're historically ignorant. I mean, Placerville was called Hangtown back in the 49er days. It was a place, there was a lot of violence with the mining claims and that was the place where the hanging tree was. And there were a lot of bad white American miners for the most part who were hanged in downtown Placerville. And it is not any sort of racist slur, the Hangtown symbol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samuel, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I want to start with saying that I just can't believe how people can call a regular folk white supremacists because I am a foreign man. I'm from another country. Moved here 14 years ago with my dad, who's a patriot. He was stationed in Germany for roughly 22 years. And for me to hear, I mean, I'm, I'm a little emotional because I can't believe how people treating normal citizens, guys who are like-minded individuals, the way you guys do. These people, all they are doing is trying to help the community. They're out there helping, being proud citizens, being proud Americans. And all we are doing is trying to help the community. While I've been hearing about white people, black people, brown people, I'm, I'm proud. I'm brown. I'm not black. I'm not white. But it doesn't make me any better or any less. Okay. When I hear this talk about BLM saying, we stand for black and brown people, dude, I'm sorry lady. I think people should stand for all people. Nobody should be handled any different or any, any, any other way than I would handle my own kid. I wouldn't, or my own wife or my own family. We not out here trying to hurt someone or discriminate or make people feel bad, right? There's just people got together because you know, we had, we going through a time in our life in 2020 where we have Corona. I think a lot of people forget what's going on. Okay. We going through a tough time and people are just trying to come together. You know, build a little, we, we a man drinking club. We not even, we nothing bad. We just trying to have fun together. I'm a Proud Boy and I'm so proud of being a Proud Boy because I'm trying to do something for my son's future. And I'm trying to show them there's nothing wrong with being patriotic for your country. Okay. We fought a lot of wars and we won a lot of wars, et cetera. History lesson made here is that how can we talk on 2020 about racism? Guys, we had the worst year ever. And I'm talking about my kid is going to school virtually. Children have to wear a mask in school. Okay. We are mandated to do things that we have never ever had to do. Most of our generations at least hadn't, okay, hadn't to deal with that. Anyways, long story short, it is December and we trying to celebrate Christmas. All right, guys, what bothers me is that my kid is out there picking out toys for children and he feels great of doing that. Okay. My son and my daughter felt amazing because that's something amazing to do because Christmas is about sharing and caring. Okay. It doesn't matter if we are Proud Boy or if I'm a regular civilian going out there. If I see people celebrating Christmas and being happy to be with families and help other families, there's nothing wrong with what we doing or anybody else. So I don't get, okay, I don't get how people can constantly say we supremacists. Why? We are not. We are not even, I just, I'm just, I'm laughing at that stuff because it's, it's just hysterical. Also, it is Christmas, guys. Okay. We need to have these kids see that things are also normal. It's Christmas time. If people do good deeds on Christmas time, how can we turn around and talk about politics? It's not about politics. I mean, Placerville should be ashamed.
Wrap up Samuel, please.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap. Give me, please, 20 seconds. I just feel like you guys should, not you especially, but the council or Placerville itself should be a bit ashamed of talking about them that way. Okay. If they will do things bad to people, I would get it, but they're not. And also CBS News. I mean, lawsuits are coming for CBS. To call people names is unheard of. Wish you guys a good night. I really do appreciate that you guys let us talk, but please remember, all the media is not on our side. So if you guys believe media, that's just fake news and I don't think you guys should listen just to one particular subject. Hear out the people like we hear out the people. Okay. We are all the people. Remember that. Okay. I wish you a good night.
Thank you.
Tracy Bunch, go ahead.
Good evening, Tracy.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting a message that he's not able to speak because of the version of Zoom that he is using. There is an opportunity to promote to panelists. I'm not sure if that will allow him access and be able to speak. I can try it. It's up to you. Let me know what you'd like to do.
Sure.
Tracy, go ahead.
Hey, good evening. Let me cut this off. How's everybody doing today?
All right, Tracy.
First, I want to give a congratulations to, you know, Michael Stergos and Ms. Jackie. No, it was a beautiful contest to run. Sitting back here and all the community members disagree on all these things and stuff like that. First of all, I just want to make sure we understand that we're part of a community and the kids are always watching. One of the reasons that I went out for the council was to inspire the kids and also give a voice to a certain population that's kind of silent at times. I think what the Proud Boys did for the kids, it wasn't a great gesture and things like that, but they got to hit the concerns of their fellow community members. And at the same time, understand like some people are intimidated to come downtown. So we have to make it more welcoming to each community member, children. When Black Lives Matter was doing protests, you know, they were greeted by negativity. Just like the Proud Boys, they come down trying to do it and they agreed with some negativity. And so one of the things I want everybody to do is find a place to communicate because the kids are watching. And it's real hard like going to council because y'all are great people. Going through a race like that is very tiresome. People judge you and you know, you find out a lot about yourselves. And so one of the things that I'm asking for the community to do is if we see a problem, we come together and we fix it. We find common ground. We help clean up our community. We help take
Great. I don't know if anyone else.
Do a great job. Y'all speak up and speak up and things like that.
Yeah, we lost you there. You were kind of cutting out. Go ahead. Tracy, we're having a really hard time hearing you. Maybe. Regina, why don't we see if we can come back to Tracy in a little bit.
Okay, James.
Sorry, Tracy, we just couldn't hear you.
James, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, James.
Hi, I, thank you guys for having me. I just wanted to let you know that I, I'm a Proud Boy and I was at the toy drive. I took my whole family of seven up there. And it's, you know, it's, it's just very disheartening to see how, how the left spins the narrative on the news. Like, for instance, I, I got on Facebook and I see on the Sacramento Bee's Facebook page, it says something like white supremacist group crashes toy drive. That's, that, that is just a, the narrative to, to say that, that, that the Proud Boys crashed the toy drive is just, it's really, I mean, I can't even think of a word to describe it other than just absolutely disgusting and disingenuous. We went up there and donated over $4,000 for needy kids. We didn't do it for, we didn't do it for ourselves. We didn't do it for anybody other than the kids. We didn't call the news or promote anybody else going up there or, or to make a fashion statement of it. The only pictures that were taken were, were by our guys and other people that, you know, other news people that were out there, you know, checking out the event and it's just, it's really sad to see how, and everybody knows it, the way this, the way things are these days, the state of affairs with the news and, and how fake news was coined, it, it really is the term of, of this era because it's, it's propaganda. It's the way you word things. It's like psychology. They place words in a certain order in a sentence to make people think certain ways. And I just think that, that people need to go out there and find out the truth for themselves. If you want to know what the Proud Boys are about, go out and ask them. Don't read anything you see on Wikipedia or on the the totally erroneous SPL, Southern Poverty Law Center website. They, they just, it's, it's all ridiculous. So I just wanted to let you guys know, the Proud Boys did nothing wrong and will continue to do charity events and we won't promote them. And we don't post pictures online and things like that. That's what the left does to control the narrative. So we're here to let you guys know that ain't going to happen anymore. We're here to tell the truth. Proud of your boy.
All right, we'll take public comment from Regina. Go ahead.
Hi there. Sorry about, hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Thanks for having me. Thanks for everybody hanging in. I just want to say, first of all, I think it's really nice that everybody, the two opposing sides get to hear from so many individuals. Hopefully that's helpful in some way. What I'm hearing a lot of is very specifics on the Proud Boy group, but I think that we have maybe, hopefully we haven't lost sight of just the number of events that transpired over the summer and saw, you know, videos of people kind of, I guess the word I could use is vigilante justice mindset. And I think that's the most concerning to me is that this has not been addressed. So kind of taking the focus off of the Proud Boys at this very specific event. I think we've heard, I think it's been pretty beat at this point. And I just want to say that I think that we need to, what I would like to see is law enforcement and or city council or board of supervisors address the mindset that they're, not only the Proud Boys, but various groups are here to protect Placerville and Hangtown and their idea of what our city needs. And to me, that's the most concerning. We saw what happened in Kenosha and I think that they're the brazen attitudes of people that they're here to do what law enforcement is here to do is, should be a grave concern to all of us. And that is my biggest concern at this point, getting away from the specifics of each group. And what we find on the internet is really not the most important thing. I think we should really be focused on the attitudes and the vigilante mindset. I think that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Danz, go ahead.
Hello, council members. Can you hear me?
We can, Tammy. Good evening.
Awesome. Good evening. Back to Clay Street really quick. I just want to let you know that the Coleman one-way sign, you know, no right turn, no left turn is definitely not working. If you talk to the police department, I'm sure they'll inform you of the tickets and warnings that they've been giving people. I would look forward to possibly doing what Regina, your civil, your engineer requested a few meetings ago of doing hard signage year round. And my other suggestion on Clay Street would be a stop sign at every intersection because that's pretty cheap installation compared to anything else that you guys might want to do. Other than that, on a personal emotional note, which you've heard a lot of, but this is a positive. I do look forward to the day we can bring back some of our historical events like the wagon train and the Christmas parade for our community. Thank you and enjoy your holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. You too.
We'll take public comment from caller 051.
Hello, I want to thank you first off for allowing me to speak. I've been listening to this take place online. I've watched it on the news and I've got to say I'm, I'm really disgusted, honestly disgusted with how America's become. The negativity and the injustice, the racism, it's a self-taught ignorance. It's something that people plant in each other's head to draw the negativity towards different races. We all are one. We all are children under God. We are people that are come from mixed races, no matter what. You are definitely not a true plain white person, a plain black person. You guarantee you have a mixed race in your family. So to take something so simple as a toy drive that benefits needy children and everything else, you don't put dollar amounts on toys. You put the fact that you've got these people willing to come in, take their time and their families to come in, donate toys to needy children to help bring up the spirit of these kids in the negative time that's going on right now. There's enough negativity in the world and I really do ask, just based off of the, you know, reviews and things I've done myself and just looking into different things. Open your minds, everyone. Pay attention to what you're doing. Don't allow others to place symbols and ideas into your own head. Have your own opinion. If you have a fear, face it. If you think someone else stands up for some type of injustice or racism, take that time and extend an olive branch, reach out to them, get to know them, find out who they are. If you think someone else stands up for some type of injustice or racism, take that time and extend an olive branch, reach out to them, get to know them, find out who they are, what they're about. Because if you stop and you pay attention to what's being displayed on to the news nowadays, everything is just so negative, so racist, so just. The injustices of it all. Everyone allows the news and the media and all the negative people to plant these different things in their head and to bring in the racism and the white supremacy of it all. Placerville's symbol has a noose in the background. So do we, should we automatically assume that our city is a place for white supremacy? It is not. It's part of history, it's just a symbol, you take what you take from it. But to place a racism status onto a group of men that were doing something so positive and to turn it so negative is just extremely sad. It's just really sad. Mayor, I just asked that you, since you are a representative of our city, that you actually sit back, do a little research. If you have a fear or you think that these people are racist, I say extend that olive branch out. Sit down and have lunch with them, see what they're really about. Don't judge them for emblems that are on their sweatshirts. Don't judge them for these symbols that they throw into the air because if we did something like that, then that means every single person throughout Sacramento, Placerville, El Dorado, Yuba. You all would be considered racist because at some point in time, you throw some type of symbol into the air that justifies hatred towards somebody else. I thank you for the time you have allowed me to talk.
Thank you. We still have quite a few speakers coming up, so gonna request that people try to keep their comments brief. So that we can get through the rest of the calls here. So I'm asking everybody to please to, if it's on the same, on this same topic, please be brief in your comments, thank you.
We'll take public comment from caller nine eight zero, go ahead.
Good evening, council members, my name's Tracy, thanks for allowing me to give some public comment tonight. First of all, I wasn't on the meeting earlier, but my understanding is that the council and the mayor have taken action. And have made a statement against what happened on Saturday. And if that's the case, I want to thank you, I haven't heard that yet tonight, but I was texted that. I think it's really important, I haven't heard this yet tonight, that um, the groups that we're talking about are classified as an extremist group by the current administration. So that's a big deal. Um, and my understanding, you can Google this, there's a new president of this group, this hate group. And he is actively working to rebrand, rebrand their image. They're obviously concerned about their optics and how they look, who wouldn't be? And I think that's probably a big reason why you saw the events that happened this Saturday. So I think it's time that we all step back and think about that. This isn't just one event that happened on Saturday. This is in our future. It's not going away, friends. This is a hate group that is working to normalize their beliefs and their actions in this community. And they're going to do it with toy drives and who knows what else. We are not going to stand by and be silent. But make no mistake, while we sit here and use their name over and over again, if you look it up, they don't have many members. So everyone that's listening here, don't feel disempowered. They, there aren't, they aren't many. We just need to not be silent. So thank you, everyone here, please take the long view and think about the policies and what we need to put in place. To protect our families, our businesses and Placerville, thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'll just remind everybody to try to keep their comments short and concise, thank you.
I'm taking public comment from Sue.
Hi, this is Sue Taylor. I, Manny Rodriguez asked me if I could read the rest of her statement because it got cut off, so I'm going to try to do that real quick. So Mark Acuna made a public statement on Facebook that said, the community needs to question those responsible for the photo. It should be noted that Manny Rodriguez, recent candidate for city council, is one of the major players supporting the Proud Boys and arranging the photos. She is not placerville, I support and respect. And then Manny's response was, Mark, that was a baseless accusation and you had no right to say that publicly about me without any evidence. City council were there. City council, there were BLM supporters and Proud Boys outside your town hall tonight. You missed a perfect opportunity to bring unity to your community. Instead, you stayed inside, too bad. There was an emotional and somewhat loud talk which turned into a real conversation and some tears and handshakes and hugs in the end. Earlier this summer, when I was filming the BLM protest, I was accused of being with BLM. Today, I'm being accused of being with the Proud Boys. I look forward to a day when groups like BLM and Proud Boys join together against the aristocratic overloads lords that run our lives. And I just want to say, I was down there Saturday, I had a lot of work to do and I thought, oh, I just need to do my work. But I wanted to do something fun, I wanted to just not have politics in my head. You know, we, my husband and I sponsored the Christmas parade, that was our Christmas parade weekend, which we were kind of sad that it had been canceled. And we thought, how fun it would be just to go down and help with the toy drive. It was a wonderful event, there was people coming and going constantly. There was happiness, there was children, it felt like a moment in time when we're not so. Biased and judgmental and all the other things that come with what's going on in the world today. And I, I was really shocked today, I mean, I've been oblivious to all of this and I just think how sad that a bunch of politicians. And people that had no idea about what that event, it was a toy drive and everybody was dropping off toys. And and to turn it into something ugly is just so sad. And I would just say what bothers me the most is the quick judgment by so many people. I have brought numerous people into my life or a community group. Or something that I'm working with from polar opposites and I bring them in the room together and they end up hugging in the end. And nobody had a conversation with these people, they made a quick judgment and put it plastered it all over the news to make us look horrible. And I think that's really sad and I think people need to stop doing that and start sitting down and talking to each other and meet each other. We're all from the same community, we all have the same feelings when you sit down and talk about it. We love our families, we love our people and we love our community and I hope we can get back to that, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
We'll take public comment from Russ, go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Thanks for taking the call. Okay, so I, I wasn't even, couldn't call in today until I saw on the news. I think it was thirteen that was saying that the Proud Boys were super racist and so I immediately called, you know, because I've heard that they're not. Um, and I'd just like to say that I'm not outraged, you know, the, the research that I did on them. There's nothing racist at all that I, I mean, they have other ethnic groups and stuff in their, in their clubs and stuff, so how could it be racist? You know what I mean? So, I don't know, it's a tough one, I can see why, you know, people are emotional. I think people need to go outside and see and meet a Proud Boy before they, you know, jump to a conclusion. If, if you can't just believe the internet, because I can go on the internet right now and it'll say the Proud Boys are racist. But I can also read on the internet, the Proud Boys are not racist. So obviously, we know that the internet does not always tell the truth. So what I recommend to people is to go outside, open your eyes. I will tell you right now, the media is biased, one way or the other, so don't trust the media, you know, go outside and see it for yourselves. You know, and instead of jumping to the conclusion that they're racist, you know, I would say, put a little bit of look into it, you know, before you do that. And and for the lady earlier that was saying, if you say bad things about BLM, you're racist, oh man, where to start on that one? You know, that, that's crazy. If you say that I don't like an organization based on it doing bad things and you say that that person's racist because they, they don't like it because they, they don't like what that, that organization's doing. Man, that is, that's crazy, that's dividing. So it's crazy, I see all the emotion built in everybody and it's, and it's really hard, but uh, I, I think a lot of people need to go read. In the Webster dictionary and and read what racism really is. To call BLM, uh, you know, to to say BLM is, is a bad organization, is not racist. If I say, hey, I don't like BLM because there's black people in it, that's super racist. But to say that I don't like BLM because they said they were going to come to Placerville and burn down Placerville, yeah, that's not racist, that's like, hey, I'm scared. You know, somebody on BLM said that they were going to come and do this and that scared a lot of people in Placerville into boarding up all their windows and boarding up the entire Main Street. BLM was coming to town to trash the place. So, you know, I, I like what Proud Boys are about. Once I saw what the news did to them today, oh my gosh, man, it makes me want to run out and become a Proud Boy just to, just to help, you know, so. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna go out and sign up just because I saw what the news did to them and what the news did to them is horrible. You know, they cropped out, you know, people of other ethnic groups that were in that picture and only showed white people and called them racist. If any of you were down there and saw that, it, it's, you have to understand how crazy that is and how biased and how fake the news is. Thanks a lot, you guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Julie Robinson, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk. What I'm unhappy about is the Proud Boys' lack of insight and them not taking accountability for their racist symbols that they brought to Main Street. Their Proud Boy hoodies with their hung body emblem and their white power hand symbol. If the KKK came down to town in their hoods to donate toys, how many of you would feel that they were good people? Proud Boys, if you want to be seen as not racist, don't wear generally acknowledged racist symbols. I ask up Hangtown Proud Boys to take responsibility for the choices of these symbols. If you walk like a duck and quack like a duck, you are a duck, thank you.
Thank you.
Caller eight three three, go ahead.
Go ahead, caller eight three three.
Caller eight three three, just press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, hi, well. I actually just wanted to take this opportunity to actually say the names of the people. That have been victims of hate crimes in Placerville. I think people will take it a lot more serious if they actually hear the names. So you can say them out loud with me, but I'll start now. Alright, I'm all done, you guys have a good night.
Caller seven four eight, go ahead.
Hi, I'm going to ask the city council, because this is the first time that I've called in, to post some clear. Guidelines because calling people racist seems to be perfectly okay, but pointing out that accepting an okay sign as a racist symbol is moronic gets me muted. So um, I'm going to go back with that and I'm going to keep it very careful about what I say because clearly my First Amendment rights are not mine. However. The okay sign simply means okay, it keeps okay, as all of the Proud Boy members have stated this evening. So we are literally taking Wikipedia and the mainstream media and those who want to call the Proud Boys racist. Over the actual words out of the mouths of the Proud Boys, many of whom are minorities. And they also talked about an entire gay segment of the Proud Boys. So to be honest, I'm not even sure what tonight's agenda item is, other than I'm defending the fact that. People who have done something amazing for our community are being completely lynched. And I'm using that word on purpose. So this is a proud county, Placerville is a proud town. City council members, you see the rampant support of the people who did something amazingly good on Saturday. In fact, I'm still waiting to hear what went south and why this is even an issue, other than the fact that the news decided a white supremacist group, quote unquote. Invaded our county and, oh my God, they gave $4,000 worth of toys to poor needy children, Jesus, Lord, help us all. Anyways, think about the support you would have, city council members, if you would actually support your constituents. Instead of acting the fool and taking on the fake media narrative. I am going to go back to what I started to say in defending Mandy, who simply put together a Christmas parade for children. And suddenly this has become this. I wanted to say to the black businessman who spoke much earlier this evening. Sorry that you feel anything but supported in this community, but I'm more sorry that you'd actually throw your town under the bus. That you'd actually tell your friends and family that it's not safe. The events you described are gross, however, do you, any proof at all that they were perpetrated by Placerville community members? Or by the Proud Boys? Or maybe they were perpetrated by people who came up from Sacramento? Or maybe they were perpetrated by BLM members? I mean, we can just go crazy with accusing people, but you have nothing to say that Placerville is not safe. So sadly, if I knew what your business was, I probably wouldn't support it because you're willing to throw your entire town under the bus.
Sorry about that, three minutes, um, let's move on to Adam Harper, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, good, good evening.
Hi, uh, I just recently started um, hanging around the Proud Boys and every single thing that I've noticed has been. Just totally positive. I'm uh, I'm half Mexican, half Tewa Indian and um, I haven't noticed any type of prejudice or anything from them at all. The, one of the first people I met was Dominic and he's completely Mexican. So I don't see where this narrative of white supremacy is coming from at all. A lot of the people in the Proud Boys are minorities themselves, they don't. Uh, hold any type of racism towards anybody. And for them to get persecuted for just showing up to a toy drive is completely outlandish. I hear they brought $4,000 worth of toys to needy children that really shouldn't be a bad thing at all. Not to mention that the. The chairman of Proud Boys is Enrique Tarrio, a black Cuban, and he's been the leader for a while now. Nobody, nobody in the Proud Boys holds any type of uh, white supremacy values. And as a matter of fact, my father was a prison guard, he has a lot of experience being around the Aryan Brotherhood. And they themselves, they don't like anybody that's not white. If you're in the KKK, you cannot be anything but white, you can't have black friends, you can't have Mexican friends, you can't even be around them. In prison, if you're around, if they see you around anybody Mexican or black or anything, you can get killed that way. So I don't see where anybody is coming up with this false narrative of, well, white supremacy and as a matter of fact. They hold tons of family values, they've been nothing but cool to me and I feel completely safe around them. As a mixed-race person, I feel totally safe around them. That I, I don't think. I don't think that they have any prejudice, prejudice beliefs in them at all. And that's all I want to say, so thank you, bye.
Thank you.
We'll take public comment from Wolf, go ahead.
Hey, you can hear me, yeah?
We can.
Fire, okay, shout out, hey mom, um, shout out to all the real ones that know, we on the. Shout out to all the real ones that know we on the left. Shout out to Lizzie, the both, who cried on tape for everyone to hear. And then people come in here talking about traffic, and it's wild. Crazy. I wanted to take a sec to remind America how about Breonna Taylor and to say that there was three officers involved in the fucking murder of-
Next caller, please.
Public comment from Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for taking my call tonight. First of all, I'd like to say that anybody who wants to give toys to the Toys for Tots Drive ought to be commended. And so I don't think that's a controversial thing to do. But I think there's some key points that we need to make. First of all, all this claiming that the Proud Boys or the folks that were out there this weekend did not display symbols, known symbols of white supremacy are just not, simply not telling the truth. The okay symbol is a well-known symbol of white supremacy. It means white power. And though you can call it, say it's okay, let me just give you a little image here. If you could see me, you would see that I'm holding up my middle finger. And my middle finger is pretty well-known to be a symbol between people. And if I were to tell you while holding up my middle finger at you that it means you're number one, I think you would find that that's hard to swallow. And when somebody holds up a symbol that means white power and slyly tells you, no, it means just okay. I would just say, if you don't want to be perceived as white supremacists, you probably shouldn't use symbols that are widely perceived as white supremacists. Also, I mean, this talk about, from the police department. I think it's important to state that the police department said that a political group overtook the event. And make no mistake, white power is not a political group. It's not the Republican Party. It's not the Democratic Party. It's not the Libertarian Party. It's a hate group. It's a hate symbol. It's a hate position. To say otherwise is to minimize what happened that day and what is depicted. And I understand that the folks there may feel like, hey, I'm, you know, as our previous caller said, I'm mixed race, I'm a part of this group. But if you are going to display the symbols of hate, you will be perceived as hateful. That's how it works. That's how the world goes. If the police department is unwilling to say that what they saw depicted in that photo next to their police car was a symbol of hate, it minimizes that hatefulness. When people outside of Plaserville see this, we can tell them all day, no, those are nice people who just donated toys displaying the okay symbol. And what they see is a symbol of hate. This makes people feel unsafe in our town. And furthermore, when the police are not willing to take a stand against it, they are justified in feeling unsafe. If they do not come to our town and shop and spend their money, this will be a horrible year. On top of everything else, our merchants have had to suffer. On top of everything else, frankly, that our people of color have had to suffer. This is another black eye in our town. And it's not the people who called it out that are a problem. It's the people who did it. They need to take personal responsibility for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lola, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to address or kind of reflect on what other people have been saying about the Proud Boys. Donating toys does not make you a good person. Donating toys does not take away from your racism. The Proud Boys are a well-known nationalist, white supremacist racist group. And I just wanted to commend the young people that are in Plaserville that are fighting for what's right, Black Lives Matter. And I really respect your bravery. And I just want to reflect on what a woman said earlier. If you quack like a duck, walk like a duck, you're probably a duck. Proud Boys, if you don't want to be racist, don't portray racist symbols. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jayden Haynes, go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for taking my call. I've just been listening, you know, and for the past, you know, I think probably hour and a half or so about all the comments, you know, and the concerns that people have. You know, I first want to start off by saying, you know, I grew up in Alroda County. And, you know, I lived there for over 30 years. And unfortunately, you know, as it relates to the Proud Boys and everything that we're talking about right now, I have had nothing but negative experiences. You know, addressing the gentleman who briefly came on to talk about, you know, people of color who've experienced, you know, hate crimes in Alroda County, and he had nothing to say for it. I have multiple stories, and not only myself experiencing that, but my sister also experiencing that, growing up in, you know, Pollock Pines in the Pastoral area. And it honestly breaks my heart. You know, when I want to come home to Pastoral and visit family, I don't feel safe. I've never felt safe. I've seen, you know, people that I grew up with, you know, be affiliated with Proud Boys and very proudly stating that they support white supremacy. You know, I even, you know, growing up, had my own experiences where, you know, I remember riding the school bus. A boy held up what we're talking about, the okay sign, and asked me, does this scare you? Because it should. My dad said it should. You know, and that sits with me and that resonates with me. And to hear those say that it's just an okay symbol, to me, it's not. To people of color in this community, it is not just an okay symbol. It is a sign of hate. It is a sign that is supposed to instill fear. And it is a sign that makes me sad. You know, this county, I grew up seeing, Alroda County is too great for hate. And over the years, I continually see the hatred growing, the division growing, and it breaks my heart. You know, I, I just, you know, I think those who are speaking up for those who don't have much of a voice, you know, you know, Lizzie included and everyone else there who aren't people of color, but who understand the plight of those who don't really have a voice. You know, my hope is that we can all just come together in the future and create a better life and a better community and make Alroda County great again. And that includes allowing people of color to feel safe in the community, around the community, not feeling as if they have a target on their back when they walk around. Not feeling, thank you, not feeling as if they are being told that they don't belong there. So I just hope that we can find a solution that is positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller user seven, I believe you've already spoken. I do have you written down on my list.
Yeah, we'll go to, maybe go to Tracy, since you got cut off from this last one.
Okay. Tracy, go ahead.
Tracy, we'll try, we'll try round two.
Round two, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. You know, Tracy's always gonna speak about love and unity. There's a lot of confusion in our community. One of the perspectives I was trying to bring out was that I do travel to Sand Ridge. I do travel to Pollock Pond. And I do travel all around and things like that. And I talk to everybody, black, white, or whatever. I've been living here for 15 years. And this city loves me. You can tell by how people voted for me. I'm a black man. And I do listen. And so when it comes down to people in this community and things like that, sometimes we let people that don't even like live here, as far as like President Trump or President Biden or whoever, kind of dictate how we treat each other. And from hearing the voices of the kids and things like that, the needyest kids, the richest kids. You know, I coach basketball. I do everything when it comes down to trying to make my community better, try to be a role model for my kids. And also for some people, kids that don't have, really have time. And so when it comes to a minority speaking out saying, I'm afraid, as a person in the community, you should be concerned to try to hear what they have to say, because you're not in their shoes. And so you should take time out of your day to find out, why do they feel like that? You know, show some compassion. And at the same time, we have to bring communication to each other. So we can help the council when they say, hey, we need to make sure we clean up our community. We need to all go to, get together, go downtown and enjoy each other, shake hands, laugh and talk, eat some good food, support the merchants. Those are the things that are really like, that makes the city thrive. And so for me, listening to all the confusion about pointing fingers. You know, fingers was pointed also at Black Lives Matter when they was doing things and people got the wrong understanding. These are your community members. These are people that grew up here, that live here, that work here, that pay taxes. The Proud Boys are the same thing. You know, so with me, I have forgiveness in my heart. I'm from Mississippi. And we went through racism. But my little city, we got together and we worked together. So I'm asking Plaserville, from the bottom of my heart, to listen to each other. Sit down and understand when you see somebody protesting, they might have a point. Or you see somebody doing something nice for the kids, they might have a point. Instead of jumping to conclusions, we need to make sure we're holding each other accountable. And so, you know, to hear all the callers call in, Lizzie did a great job. Some of the Proud Boys, like I say, you know, they kind of preaching from their, from their perspective. And so I'm being understandable to the community and while the kids are watching and while the ladies and all the other people are watching that are afraid. They need us to come together and we need to have some type of event where we can sit down and have a beautiful conversation and leave with joy in our heart. Just wanted to thank y'all for letting me come back and say some things. And at the same time, I do appreciate the council. Y'all do a great job listening and making action come forth. And our police force are awesome. And also our sheriff department. We have a great city, so let's act like it. So thank y'all for y'all time. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, Tracy.
Alright.
Kathy, go ahead.
Good evening, Kathy. Kathy, you still on mute there? Kathy, there you go.
I was not going to say anything. I'm just listening, but somehow I accidentally raised my hand. But I feel that there's a lot being said tonight that needs to be listened to. And I also feel that we have to be concerned if somebody comes here and is showing a symbol of hate. That it isn't about whether the police car was down there or not when that happened. It's about what does it mean? And what does it mean to our community? And what is wrong? What is wrong that that should be something that is exonerated here? So anyway, I really didn't have anything to say. I was just listening. But after I heard my name about four times, I decided I better unmute. So thank you for listening. I do see that there's a problem. That the people that donated the toys were very generous, but they were trying to give a message. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, we'll take Tiffany, go ahead.
Good evening, Tiffany.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, my mistake. I'm not sure if this is Ronnie again, but we've already had this speaker.
Okay.
Would you like me to continue and allow him to speak?
No, if we already had a speaker, then I think we've gone through enough public comments. It looks like that's probably the last one. Oh, I saw one just pop up.
Okay, we'll take Kirk Callen Smith. Go ahead.
Good evening, Kirk.
Like Kathy, I was just listening, wasn't inclined to speak right away. But you know, I normally applaud you for listening to people, and it's important for the democratic process. But frankly, I feel sad because we're reminded, at least I am in listening to this, that we have more political division in this country than we've had many say since the Civil War. And this illustrates that people not listening to each other. So for the Proud Boys, I point out that a lot of what you said, yeah, I'll accept it for the sake of argument. And then ask you, you have a role in how you're perceived. So just as someone pointed out, how a symbol can be perceived different ways, like holding up one finger could be number one and viewed in all kinds of different ways. Your symbol, you should be aware of how it's perceived by other people. Likewise, this idea of making donations, the Ku Klux Klan included members of President Truman, Senators Byrd, and Hugo Black. They used to make donations too. That's not gonna get you over. I'm afraid that while I'll agree about the perceptions that many people have had, you're responsible for part of how that happens. All the advertising I saw promoted it, and this not, might not have been all the advertising that was out there, but all of it promoted it in a very political way. A Christmas event in political ways. It was talking about bringing your flag, blue flag for a particular presidential candidate. That's not something we associate with Christmas. And the same thing frankly was done on 9/11, and that was very troublesome. No one's mentioned that, but you know, Lexi Bogart mentioned that on a Facebook page and got savagely beaten up for it. People threatened to not go to patronize her family's winery because of her having commented and asked if it was appropriate. I can tell you that outside of this town, nobody has a celebration on 9/11. It seemed like a Fourth of July event. And if somebody wants to organize that like we did for 100 years in this town for the Fourth of July with a parade, I'll do it. But what happened, you know, on that, on that day was really a celebratory thing where there was lots of political speeches. That does not happen in New York, the nation's capital where I was on that day, or in Pennsylvania. It's a very solemn, sober day of remembrance. There's no political speeches.
Thirty seconds.
Protestantship. So next time I won't be silent on that one. But I, again, I think that we ought to do more listening to each other. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
Okay, we'll take public comment from Hum. Go ahead.
Hey.
Hello? Yes, we can hear you.
Say that would you just, like a person said earlier, just the person who is getting the worst environment, the person who's feeling the worst, whoever is getting, you know what I mean? I feel like thoughts real quick, kind of didn't think I'd actually get called on.
Cutting out a little bit, if you want to speak closer to your microphone potentially, maybe.
Is that better?
Yes.
I am just very, very disappointed with the lack of consideration that has not been going to the minority. I think it's funny that you guys are talking about how the Proud Boys groups has minority members and how even minority members can't be racist in and of itself. And I think that maybe the white supremacy has gotten a little lost with the whole Proud Boys thing. I think that, yes, it is a not well-known or not even whatever, but what I'm trying to say is that but what's been going on. I'm very mad that you cut my brother off earlier. Okay, I'm sorry. Bye. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take public comment from Nodi. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to call in and give my opinion on the matter. I was a bystander at the event on Saturday and was there with my family of seven. And I just wanted to say that I witnessed, you know, the Proud Boys being there. And I've done research and I've looked into things. And, you know, we have to look at intent before we impose judgment. These group of men did not cause mayhem. They did not disrupt the common peace of people enjoying the family festivities that day. They did not shout racial slurs towards anyone in the community. They didn't take that symbol and shove it in people's faces, running up and down the streets. Instead, they, you know, they, they were there for one intent, and that was to give to the needy children. Their actions prevail the slanderous nonsense that's being imposed on them. It's unfair and it's unrighteous. The symbol represents brotherhood. And, and it's a symbol that, you know, a brotherhood that's built on family and moral values of love for this country and doing the right thing in our communities. Ones such as giving to needy children at Christmas time with, with no discrimination behind it, nothing but love. And no one gets to impose or judge what a symbol means to one person or a group. But instead, they are the, you know, the group are the only ones that get to define that and they define that by their actions. And what's being imposed on them is unfair because their actions speak louder than what's being said in social media, on the news, and, and just what people are feeling from it. And, and that's it. And just thank you for giving me this time, but just remember thou shall not judge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Weizenheimer, go ahead.
I actually just want to agree with what the last caller just mentioned. I went downtown by myself and I was there to peacefully protest and unfortunately, a group of gentlemen attacked me and said they were going to do very dangerous things to me and the Proud Boys came and escorted me safely into my car and made sure I got off the premises and later I went to reach out to them to thank them because I was, I was scared. And they actually met a lot of my family who are of color and I feel like they were so respectful and the compliments that they got afterwards were very high of praise and I disagree with everything the last caller said is that they're being judged based on things that are not true versus what their actions are doing. And other than that, I, I don't have much more to add. I think the last caller said it perfectly.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take last call for item seven point two, oral communication, items that are not on the agenda. Shannon, go ahead. Shannon, are you there?
Shannon? Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and close, uh, public comments. Uh, thank you, everybody for, calling in and, uh, expressing, uh, your thoughts. I did have, um, wanted to, uh, call on Rebecca Neves real fast, uh, to give an update. Just a quick update on our two favorite streets, Spring and Mosquito. Now, there was a question early on in this and I was going to ask that anyway. So I, if you could just give us a quick update on, on those two streets.
No problem. Good morning. Everybody still has their coffee. On Spring Street, yeah, we were able to pave, uh, what we're referring to as phase three, which was, uh, from Tunnel Street to Pleasant today. Uh, we've done very well. Thank you to all the neighbors, all the businesses, all the agencies in the nearby vicinity that really, um, helped us, you know, by staying out of the active work zone. And thank you so much for your patience. Um, and with, you know, kind of capitalizing on the excellent weather we're having in December, we're actually rolling right into phase three tomorrow, which is the segment from Pleasant to Bedford. And, uh, we are still, as long as, uh, we keep getting good paving temps and good weather, we're, we keep charging ahead. So, following, uh, the completion of paving for, uh, Spring Street, we're moving over to Mosquito. The Mosquito Utility Project has been wrapping up on some final items over the last few weeks and working on their punch list and Cory's been working with the contractor to wrap up that contract. And so we're excited to see that moving forward as well as getting some PG&E relocation work that we've been patiently waiting for. So we still, we still have high hopes that, you know, maybe we can deliver that as our little Christmas gift to the folks in Placerville and just, um, again, a huge shout out to our community for voting yes on Mesrel because without that money, we wouldn't be able to do any of this. So thank you very much for trusting us with that.
Thank you. And, uh, did you say mosquito too? I'm sorry, maybe I.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So, uh, when, um, Spring Street was awarded as a contract, uh, you may recall, we actually, because we had such similar work, we bid it out as one job. So we bid out both Spring Street and Mosquito. It's all the same contract. So the contractor is basically going to be relocating or remobilizing their forces over to Mosquito Road at the conclusion of Spring Street.
Gotcha. And on Spring, I know, um, was there going to be, um, like bike lanes or anything? I know we had talked about potentially squeezing that in a little bit because now that it'll be nice and smooth, people will tend to drive faster. I know I've gotten a couple of, uh, questions already about, you know, people already driving faster on the one little, the one, the first segment that we've already, uh, completed.
You too? So, yeah, no, we actually have, uh, intention of, uh, when we lay down the show, there's a couple of things that we've actually doing. Yeah, striping makes or breaks the feel of a job. Striping is essentially the instructions, if you will, to the driver behavior. So striping and signage for that matter. So the striping, um, we are implementing, um, basically, uh, our city informal standard of eleven foot lanes, which gives a narrowing effect and a slowdown effect for, um, for our drivers through town. The other benefit of doing that is now you've picked up two additional feet on, you know, on, on the overall roadway prism and one foot on each side, uh, of the shoulders. And whenever that, uh, affords itself as an opportunity, we absolutely do create that as a bike lane. We have lots of active cyclists in there. The, a hill like Spring Street does not scare them. So we, uh, we would put that in there and we are intending on putting that, uh, in there. The other item that we've added is we're rearranging some of the turning movements and, uh, overall, intersection layout at Spring and Tunnel. There were some sight distance issues, um, and to, uh, Mayor Saragosa and Councilwoman, uh, Borelli's, uh, merits, they, you know, reminded us to look after it. And so, you know, we did, we went out there, we relayed it all out, we checked it and we checked it again. And so we're reassigning some of the space out there a little bit differently than what was previously striped to allow for better sight distance and, uh, better turn movements.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, I, I am, uh, I, I've gotten used to just mashing the pedal when I, you know, make a left turn there. So I'll look forward to that. Thank you. Anything else? Cleve, I don't know if anything else came up. I, I made a note, a couple of things, but if there was anything else, uh, staff wanted to make comments on?
No, I don't think there's any else we need to at this time. We'll, we'll review this. If there's something we need to get back to an individual person on, uh, we'll do that, but nothing else needs comment at this time.
Okay. Vice Mayor, did you have something you wanted to?
Nope, I think Cleve covered it.
Okay. So we've just hit ten o'clock and per our rules, we need to, um, have a motion if we're going to continue with, uh, the rest, really, all of our agenda for the most part. So if, um, anyone wants to make a motion so that for us to continue tonight's council meeting, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we continue on to, on with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Patty. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, seeing none. Uh, let me, uh, ask my colleagues, do you, uh, that was obviously very long. Do you want, uh, five, 10 minute break and then get on with the rest of it or do you want to continue?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay. All right, uh, Placerville, we're going to, uh, citizens, we're going to take a five minute break and we will be right back. Thank you. All right, uh, we're going to go ahead and, uh, move on to item eight, uh, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine. Uh, it will be enacted by one motion by roll call unless any member of the council, uh, wishes to remove an item for discussion. Any, uh, questions or anything, uh, we want pulled from the consent calendar?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a second. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, uh, the first and a second, we'll go ahead and open up, um, consent calendar for public comment.
A comment is not open for item eight, consent calendar. Go ahead, eight, five, seven.
Hey, give me a second. Want me to mute my laptop here?
No problem.
Okay, so there was the item, I think it's the, um, police radar trailer. Um, I just wanted to know, have you guys done any research who owns this company on the background? Because I'm dead serious about not doing any contracts with anything that ties back to Communist China. They are trying to infiltrate our country. They openly stated. They have a lot of Huawei, the cell phones, the cell towers. They're trying to infiltrate us every way they can, get our data every way they can. So if somebody could please, I see that it costs, the trailer costs what it does. Not a problem. It's a pretty cool trailer. I mean, it can do traffic counts and everything else. The fifteen hundred dollars a year for the service um, of collecting that data and storing it. I would really like to know who controls that data ultimately. So if somebody could please look into that. That's, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
I'm sure you can hear me now. Eight point five, the same one that Michael Drovich was talking about, the trailer. I think that's really a good idea. I think it can give us a lot of information that can help us with our planning how to control our traffic and how it's moving through our little city here. So I would support that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Last call for item eight, consent calendar. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead, uh, close public comment, bring it back, uh, to the council. Uh, we have a first and a second. Any, any comments from anybody else before we? All right, seeing none. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna? Sorry. Councilmember Borelli? Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember, no.
Aye.
Woo.
All right, your, your first official. All right, thank, thank you. Tonight, there's no, uh, we didn't have any items pulled, uh, or ordinances or public hearings. Uh, so we'll move to item twelve, uh, and item twelve point one, uh, which is adopted resolution approving amendments to the water supply agreement with Eldorado Irrigation District and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute, uh, said agreement. And Mr. Morris has, uh, this item for us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I've asked, uh, Mr. Warren to take care of this one tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
You be, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, we purchase water from EID or Eldorado Irrigation District as a municipal ratepayer. Um, and that agreement currently, uh, will expire December thirty first of this year. Um, and staff has negotiated a new water supply agreement with EID. At EID's meeting on November ninth, the EID board adopted the proposed water supply agreement that's in your packet tonight. The proposed agreement encompasses a five-year period from January first of, uh, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. Other than the revised rates and charges, the agreement with the amendments are essentially the same as the previous agreement we have with EID. EID adopted water rates, um, for the five-year period to help offset their costs through, uh, a cost of service study for both operating and maintaining their water system that serves the city. Staff did review and discuss the calculations that EID used, including, um, getting proper credit for the property tax that the city pays that EID receives. So properties within the city limits, EID does receive a portion of, uh, the property tax, making sure they're offsetting their costs by that, uh, revenue first. The rate increase percentages shown on page one of the report are the same as those adopted by other, ratepayers within the EID district. Tonight's action would not directly increase the city's water rates. You already have a water revenue program that will go through the next two fiscal years that directly, um, address those in- increases with, uh, EID. And we did assume those increases through fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The increases for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five will need to be addressed through the next rate study the city will do, uh, for those years, for the next five years after that. The equivalent rate increases to the city are shown on page two of the report. You can see that. Most of the other changes to the document are date changes, uh, that were reflected in the agreement. Section four of the agreement addresses increases in the FCC or facility capacity chart, which is for new connections. EID has not changed that rate for the city of Placerville for several years. And so they're going to do a study of that. And we'll bring recommendations to you, um, on or around July first or probably your, your second meeting in June. And so that'll be an opportunity to take a look at that. Beginning in July, that's July, uh, two thousand twenty-one. The agreement does cover a five-year period. The increase of five percent effective January twenty-one is included in your adopted budget. So that cost has already been accounted for. And that's about it unless you have any questions for Mr. Morris and I, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Councilmembers, any, uh, questions for Dave or Cleve? All right, seeing none, uh, right now. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
What comment is not open for item twelve point one? The, um, approving amendments to the water agreement with EID. We'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Okay, water is one of the things that Measure H and Measure L have a great deal to, uh, be concerned about. And I'm thinking that the improvements that we are making to both our, to our water system to improve it and to prevent leaks and fix all the leaks we have should help us with our cost to EID as well. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Eight, five, seven. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hey, good evening, Council. So looking at this, exhibit one, it shows a five percent e- increase in charges every year for the next five years. So we're looking at a twenty-five percent increase over twenty-five, I mean, over the next five years. Obviously, that's going to be passed through. So everyone needs to be aware of this. I would like, has anyone considered the, um, state mandate to take us to fifty-five and fifty gallons per person per month limit in the future? The impacts on that? And then in the, the language of the, it is actually very short, I appreciate it. But the strikeout and underscore of the old and the new language. The increase in facility charges, uh, used to be two percent annual increase and now it's going to be increased proportionally to the increase in facility charges paid by all other districts. What does that actually mean? Do we have an idea of what the high and low? Uh, it just seems a little too vague of language in that it is, uh, it's under C of page one, uh, right in right in the middle there, the underscore and strikeout. If somebody could please address what that actually means. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Last call for item twelve point one, the EID agreement. I see no more public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comments. Mr. Warren, did you have any any comments on the that striked out language on the on the amendment?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So what that's saying is, is that EID is going to increase the city of Placerville's FCC proportionally. It won't be the same dollar amount as the rest of the district. But if you take our base of what we're paying today, what a new connection would pay today, the cost of inflation, the cost of providing improvements to project one eighty four, which is the system, the part of EID that services the city of Placerville. That cost will proportionally be increased. And I could tell you that in previous negotiations, EID has been very fair. Again, looking at its system, not its entire system, but just the system portion that services the city of Placerville. And what is our fair share of that? So we will, through negotiations, Mr. Morris and I look at that very closely and provide a recommendation to the city council. Most likely in the spring, most likely June of two thousand twenty one.
Thank you, Cleve. Yeah, additional.
Yeah, one point I can add to that, if you read the next sentence after that, then normally they'll look at the change in the industry news record, construction cost index, which is a very common index that they use in the construction industry to look at the increases. It's fair, we do the same thing for some of our indexes. For temp fees, for example. I think it's a fair statement. We will look at it with the proposed increase and how they establish that. But I think it's a fair way to establish that.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Could one of you speak to? So we see this five percent rate increase that they're charging the city. And of course, that gets passed on to our residents. However, we've seen water use reductions as well as hopefully, some of the repairs we're doing is also reducing our leakage rate that we have. So I don't know that while the sense five percent with all the things that we're putting in place and with reduction to people's uses, we're not going to be seeing that five percent increase. Is that is that right in terms of the pass through? That's a great comment, and I know Sue Rodman hit the nail on the head. Or because of our efforts with Measure H and Measure L to repair and replace the water lines in the city, our loss rate has really dropped significantly. And that was shown in two thousand nineteen. We anticipate similar performance in two thousand twenty and maybe even getting better. But so a lot of the water, some of the water that we were paying for to EID was just wasted water. Well, that amount of wasted water has shrunk. And I can tell you that even usage by the customers has shrunk a little bit. They've become more savvy at saving water, low flow toilets, showerhead, so on and so forth, more appliances. So our cost won't be as much as we thought it was when we did the last study. I can tell you right now that the estimates that you see on page two for the cost increases, we actually assumed in the two thousand twenty three was almost a hundred thousand dollars more than that. Now, we're probably going to have more increases in other areas of your budget. But for water purchase, I think we're going to come in well below that. More at five hundred and eighty four thousand in year twenty two, twenty three. So that's that's the good news. So I don't I don't anticipate passing on any additional cost at that, you know, at least for the next two years to the rate pairs because of these increases beyond what we've already planned for. Thank you.
And I think, Dave, you kind of mentioned this, but also look at the chart on on page two of the report that translate that five percent and what it may mean in terms of actual rate increase for our customers. Now, five percent doesn't mean five percent to our customers. If you look at year twenty twenty one, it's a one point three eight percent increase because that water purchase is only a portion of our bill that we that we charge, so.
Thank you, Cleve. Patty, you had a question?
Well, I had a comment. And our rate payers, and rightfully so, every time we even mention a raise in water rates, they, you know, I mean, we, I mean, you have to admit, our rates are pretty high. And it's a difficult for some folks to swallow that, you know. So I think I would, when we talk about this, I think it's great to emphasize what Cleve just said. You know, in terms of maybe money and emphasize that it's not going to be five percent. And, you know, kind of leave any anyone thinking that it's going to go up, you know, before they sell their house and leave town. Which I've heard, I've heard people say, if my water goes any higher, I can't afford to stay here. So, you know, and we all know it, we, you know, we understand, we're all rate payers too. So it's affecting all of us.
Yep, that regional water quality board that had us building very, very, very expensive water treatment. Okay, any other questions? All right. Way to entertain a motion.
I'll move item twelve point one.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and have roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item twelve point two. And that's adopt a resolution approving the job description and salary schedule for the city treasurer slash accountant position effective from December eighth, two thousand twenty and to authorizing the city manager to appoint Candace Bernardi as the city treasurer and accountant effective December eighth. And Mr. Warren has this report for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So California government code requires that each city have a city treasurer who is either elected or appointed. Historically, California cities have moved from elected to appointed staff. And currently, more than two thirds of California cities have a have made this move. The trend for newly incorporated cities has been established. Establish these positions as appointed rather than elected in recognition of the technical training needed to perform this job and the need to appoint the most qualified applicant. On November third of this year, Placerville voters voters approved Measure R, which changed the city treasurer from elected position to an appointed one. Tonight, we're requesting the council to establish a new job description and salary schedule for the city treasurer slash accountant position and approve the appointment to the said position. Over the past twenty three years, Kathy Tremblay has faithfully served as your city treasurer. Prior to being elected as city treasurer, Miss Tremblay served as the appointed accounting supervisor. Miss Tremblay retired as full time treasurer, accounting supervisor on April fourteenth, two thousand four, and continued to serve as the elected treasurer in addition to working at part time accounting supervisor position. And Miss Tremblay decided not to rerun, as you know, as city treasurer this November and plans on fully retiring this month. The primary duties of the treasurer accountant, accounting supervisor include cash management, investment administration, as outlined on the first page of your report. Staff is recommending that the less technical tasks of the administration of TOT and central purchasing be reassigned or decentralized. For example, TOT administration would be reassigned to the accounting assistant one or two class. The department heads have discussed decentralizing purchasing of most office supplies whereby each department would have the ability to order office supplies individually. Some office office supply orders that benefit from an economies of scale, for example, a copier paper at City Hall would continue to be ordered by the finance department. Janitorial supplies would be ordered by the community services department, which manages most city facilities. Departments would be responsible for ordering other specialty items such as flags and lanterns that currently the treasurer is doing. The existing cash management and investment administration duties of the city treasurer position would blend well with the accountant position class. The proposed job description for the city treasurer accountant position is included in your packet. Staff began with the accountant job description and added this first seven bullets under the duty section for the treasurer duties. Candace Bernardi has faithfully served as the city's full time accountant since May seventh, two thousand sixteen, and has also served as the unofficial deputy city treasurer when Miss Tremblay was away from time to time. Miss Bernardi has the knowledge and aptitude to serve as the city's treasurer. I think she'll do a great job. Due to the workload impacts of the treasurer duties, Miss Bernardi's existing tasks would be reassigned to the accounting assistant two position, including monthly reconciliation of payment preparation for health and welfare invoices, bulk fuel allocation, record keeping of engineering time and materials costs, and general liability claims. We would also, at some point, look at time sheet entry as well on a as need basis. The salary schedule for the proposed position would be the same as the accountant position. So there's no additional cost for this action tonight. And the adopted twenty twenty one general fund budget assume this change. So there's no budget impact with tonight's action. So if approved, Miss Bernardi would become the new city treasurer accountant effective tonight. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Morris. This council member Barelli.
I just wonder how how do you go about then the appointment of this position? Is that is it is it you as head of the department? Or are others, are there any to choose from? Do they buy for it? Or how is that? How do you arrive at that? Since all this is new now, so just.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm asking tonight is that you authorize Mr. Morris to appoint Miss Bernardi. We have. She's really the most qualified person in our department. I would say that she she's the only one within the department. If you wanted us to go out, we could, but.
No, I'm just curious as to how, you know, because we never did have that presented to us. And I just wondered, you know, how you would, is it going to be like appointing somebody from within, you know, is that?
That's correct. That's correct. So this this is somebody that currently works for the city and has been in the accountant class, which a lot of the duties align with the treasurer position. She's actually acted as deputy treasurer off and on for the, well, for the past probably about three years. So she's had training, she's going to get additional training. And matter of fact, she's doing cross training right now with Miss Tremblay and myself. So she's a great fit. I wouldn't recommend her unless I trusted her. I think she'll do a great job for you.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, seen none. We'll go ahead and open up public comments.
Hey, eight five seven, go ahead.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So going forward, so this lady sounds very capable and I respect Dave's opinion. He wouldn't recommend her if she wasn't qualified. But going forward over decades from now, how does this work? When the position becomes vacant, is the city going to create an ordinance to where the treasurer's position becomes an interview position to city council with staff input? How does it work going forward? Does this position always get just appointed by the city manager? Who is in charge of who has this office of very important regard? As for the departments being able to purchase separately outside of an oversight, I would still like to see some kind of oversight, like a dollar limit. The Department of Engineering can only order forty thousand dollars worth of X before somebody steps in and says, wait a minute. And I know you already do that, but something official, some kind of oversight is always important in a structure. And aside from that, those are my main questions is going forward, when the position is vacant, who appoints the person? And who has oversight over X dollars of purchases by department? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Last call for item twelve point two, the city treasurer position. No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comments, bring it back to the council. Mr. Warren, and if you had any comments on the public comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So regarding rehiring, Mr. Driscoll and I, city attorney Driscoll and I discussed a while back that we need to revise the ordinance. I think Mr. Grobich kind of hinted at that. Because the current ordinance reflects a elected treasurer. So that's something that we can incorporate in the ordinance when it's updated and clearly state that who hires the treasurer in the future. And any other items that we want to include in there that reflect out of government code. In regards to hiring or, excuse me, ordering, we do have internal controls already. Number one is your budget. The city council adopts the budget. Those are our spending limits. In each department, we have, for example, office supplies. Most departments and divisions within those departments have budgets for office supplies. So those are their limits. The middle managers can order or spend up to a thousand dollars. The department heads can spend up to their budget. So and in regards to revisions to that budget within the existing budget, Mr. Morris has the authorization to approve those. Going outside of your adopted budget, that would take an action by the council. Only the council can increase budgets. If it's something that would require competitive bidding, we will go out and get bids and bring them back to you, the recommendations at higher dollar level. So there there already are internal controls. Miss Tremblay was really just facilitating the purchasing, almost acting like a purchasing agent for the city. And some of the tasks, quite frankly, because of technology can be easily decentralized to each department. But we do recognize there's an opportunity for economies of scale leveraging lower prices with larger orders. And we're going to continue doing that.
Thank you, Dave. Cleve, did you have any comments?
Yeah, just just quickly on the on the appointment process, we're bringing this to you at this time. We will, as Dave mentioned, revise the ordinance to establish exactly how it's done. Ultimately, as this was an elected position before, I think it's appropriate that at this time especially that you appoint that. And I believe there will be some sort of approval process for the appointment in the future by the city council. However, as it's combined with the accountant position, the accountant position, if that became vacant, we would want to recruit somebody and go through a normal interview process for that, probably more on a staff level like we would for the normal accountant position. But then ask for the ratification of that position if necessary by the city council for the city treasurer portion of that 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 person feels. So that's kind of the way I see it going in the future, so.
And I saw Mr. Driscoll pop in. Did you have, you wanted to add a little more into that?
Well, just that the government code provides that once that city treasurer position goes from an elected to an appointed position by virtue of a vote of the people, then it's the city council that makes that appointment to that position. And city council has in the code the authority to delegate that to the city manager or to basically authorize the city manager to make that appointment. Our code right now reads in terms of an elected position. The government code overrides that. So even though there's a conflict, it's just a matter of cleanup. It's not a substantive conflict.
Okay, thank you. That's that's helpful. Patty, I saw you.
And that's what I was asking, because I think that that's what we had had explained to us before. You know, so I was. You know, so I was wondering when that process, you know, would take over. So I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Patty.
With that, I would like to recommend, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, councilmember Taylor. Any other comments? Seen none. Roll call, please.
Here, Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Oh, mute.
Hi, sorry about that.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Councilmember, no.
Bye.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item 12.3. And that's adopt a resolution approving a cannabis community benefits program for the city of Placerville. And Mr. Morris has his presentation for us.
Hey, Mayor and council. We'll get to this as quick, through this as quickly as I can. Section code, city code, section 528-9 requires as our cannabis license provide a, be part of or provide a benefit in terms of a community benefit program. When we adopted the ordinance, that was established. And over the last about month now, I've communicated with those cannabis licensees that we are preparing to fully license, hopefully within the next week, that we needed to address this that's required by the ordinance. They submitted proposals to me of what that, that would be. They varied somewhat. I worked with them because I felt it was important to have something somewhat consistent in how those, those funds were collected. We agreed upon that each licensee would donate a sum of 1% of gross revenues. That's an easy term to track going forward, and we felt that would be a good way to do it. That funding would be received. And then my recommendation, the committee would be established, appointed as outlined in the program that's attached to your staff report. That committee would review the programs and projects and recommend funding on a, on an annual basis. I did put some revenue estimates for this program in your staff report. I want to emphasize that these are very, very, very rough estimates on information received from the licensee. It may be low, it may be high. I just really don't know. And I put a figure for year one of 70,000 to 115,000, year two, 160 to 270. Those are some pretty broad, broad ranges of numbers, and I recognize that. And so it may take us a couple of years to really see how our cannabis program comes together and how much funding would come up for this program. I want to first also apologize in the discussion item. I refer to the, the committee membership, and there's a typo in there. It doesn't actually give what membership is. So I would refer you back to the adopted, the program to be adopted. It is attached to your report, and that outlines who that committee would be made up of. And, and this is my recommendation. We can discuss this if you have other ideas of who that committee should be. Under the project selection process, we talked about the committee. Being made up of a seven-member committee consisting of the chief of police or his, his or her designee, the city manager or their designated representative, the Recreation and Parks Commission, a public member that would be selected by the city council, and then one member of each of the three cannabis licensees. So for a total of seven members, that would comprise the committee. I see this committee probably only meeting maybe once, maybe twice a year. Around budget time, they would meet. Recommend projects to be included in the budget. And then if there's, you know, if something happened to one of the projects, revenues are higher, expenses are lower, whatever. There may be a reason that we come back to meet again and recommend adjustments to what was recommended forward. As I mentioned, this was shared with each of the candidates. I have not received any response to the negative. So I'm assuming that they're in favor of, based on my initial discussion with them, they were. And so I think this can go forward, and this will be the, kind of the last step before we will be able to issue their licenses to them, which will allow them to go forward to the state and get their license to the state and prepare to open. Right now, kind of a round number timeframe from when we think they would open would be about six months from now. So in terms of this fiscal year, we probably won't see a lot, any, very little of this revenue this year. But next year should be close to a full year if all three of them are able to open up next, about six months. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Hey, thank you, Cleve. Any questions? Yes, councilmember Borelli and then councilmember Taylor.
Cleve, on these, the committee members, would, would the general public have the right or could they? And also the, like the city council, if a person has a thought, an idea for, you know, where they would like, what they would like to see, can they enter that with, to those people to be, you know, discussed?
Yes, absolutely. We would entertain other ideas. You notice I've listed these projects that are on, see those are actually on the front of the staff report on number two. It lists what those are. Those were primary, most of those are programs that were proposed by the licensees. I think I maybe added a couple in there, but mostly those are ones that were proposed by them. And so we would, we would go with those. But we are open to adding additional programs. And you notice we have kind of a catchall in there that we call other in case something comes up on one year that we think is a good project or program that may not be included in that list. So.
Okay, I have another, so just wondering.
Go ahead, Patty.
No, no, no. I, I.
It's okay.
Oh, that was the one.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, go ahead, Kara.
Well, I would like to add a couple of items to that list of projects to be considered. One is vegetation management and like fire assistance for homeowners. I think that that, I would love to see that as a priority. And then also programs that address and mitigate homelessness in the city limits. If, if the, my colleagues would entertain that.
Good, councilmember, councilmember, no.
One thing I would like to make sure we're going to address is that we do a review and look at the impacts that the mayor may not have in our city and make sure that we're going to address any problems that may arise from these new businesses also. That, that we're going to review that, that we're going to look at that. I mean, everyone gets all excited about the new things, the shiny things. But I want to make sure we don't lose sight of there may be some negative things that we want to address also.
If I can address that quickly.
Yep.
Reminder that on top of this, we have a 4% tax that will come in addition to this. It is, one of the main purposes is to help mitigate some of those, those impacts that may come up. So if you take these estimated numbers I have here and multiply those by four, that's the potential tax revenues that would be coming in from this. And that's, not to say that that would all go towards that. That can go to general government also, but it, it can help mitigate any impacts that may come up.
Yes, vice mayor.
Thank you. I, I'd like to suggest that we may be underestimating the amount of time and energy that this requires. You know, if you've ever, if you ever have looked into what the women's fund goes through to distribute their funds on an annual basis, it's, it's quite a process. And the process goes, in, in what we're looking at is you're, there's, this is a significant amount of money for this town to have to distribute to probably a lot of people that are going to be interested in this. So I don't know how much is going to be, how much is allocated toward staff time? Or it's going to be volunteer time, or we're going to have a nonprofit help facilitate this process? I think there's, I think we're, I don't want to say grossly, but I think we could be significantly underestimating the effort and time that's gone into this rather than, that will go into this. And I don't think it's just going to be one or two meetings a year unless those meetings are really long. Because you have to accumulate the information, you have to disseminate the information. People have to vote, decide, figure out how they're going to vote on it, and then have a whittling down process to figure out what are the, what are the ones that they're going to do? And then they're going to have, are you going to do an application? Are you going to do a grant process where people submit their applications? This, you know, I don't, I don't want to start designing the program here at the council, but I think there needs to be some recognition of staff time that's, that's going to need to be or nonprofit that will help facilitate this process.
It's a good point, a vice mayor. I agree. I think, you know, you almost need a planning committee for the committee in order to come up with, you know, what the parameters are going to be. Or maybe it's just up to this committee to come up with what those parameters are going to, are be. Because you're right, if we have to oversee a dispersment program, if it's, you know, if we're coming up with criteria for how we would give funding away to a group under this, you know, we'd have to come up with those. So whether that's staff or whether it's this committee or whether it's, you know, a third party, like you said, potentially a nonprofit, we will have to build out those, those parameters.
And then there's the potential for follow-through and follow-up and whether they're allocated, the money's being used, is allocated or granted, there's, it's a process.
And I don't disagree with you, Councilor Vice Mayor Thomas. I think that one of the, I looked at some, the ways some of the others have done this. I think that there quite likely could be portions of this that maybe we do talk to a nonprofit. And I'll mention such as the community foundation that maybe could administer a portion of these. Some of the items, we talk about public safety equipment. I, I think that may be an easier, easier one. But when you talk about donations to nonprofits and et cetera, I recognize there is some point involved with that. And so maybe taking a portion of those funds, that the direction of the committee may be on an annual basis, it may go to something like the community foundation to administer with guidelines how those could be administered is definitely a possibility.
Councilmember, no.
I wanted to add one thing. Kara had mentioned vegetation management and addressing and mitigating homeless, which I'm in favor of adding both of those. But I also wanted the council to consider the long deferred maintenance list that we have. I think it's like 28 pages long. And if we could, you know, start knocking one of those projects out a year or something that it's really something we should be looking at too.
Wait, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment before we, we go a little bit further in here. And then we'll bring it back for more discussion.
Kathy, go ahead.
Good evening, council. I know it's late. And when I was on the city council, I remember once that we were on the Jay Leno Show because they read a headline from the Mountain Democrat that said, "Council stays up late to discuss going home early." And that was, that was many years ago. And anyway, I, I'm, one of the questions I had, and I think that maybe Cleve answered it, is how, how the list of projects and programs was created. I have a lot of thoughts on this, and I don't believe that competitive grant applications are the best way to use the funds. The county with their TOT tax had grant, grant applications, and they would fund this and they would fund that of other nonprofits. And I always felt that the county TOT money should be used at the county. And that's the way I feel about these funds. I think that they should be used only for city programs and, whatever the words are, programs and projects. I, I believe that. And I think that they all should be programs and projects of the city of Placerville because we never have enough money and there's always so much more to do. I'm looking at the list, on that list of, I agree with chief of police or designee, city manager or designee. I would also say community services director or designee instead of Recreation and Parks Commissioner, a public member and a cannabis representative. But when you look down at the, or up at the, I agree with A, public safety equipment. B, city youth assistance fund program. C, Placerville Police Department cadet program. D, community cleanup costs. And I, I was interested in the other programs that were mentioned by council members. But I would also say E, city beautification, because there's never enough money for that. The vegetation relief, the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council has a lot of funds for that every year to help people with their cleanup projects at their own homes. I have to say that I was one of the original board members on the Boys and Girls Club, and I think they do a fabulous job of raising their own funds. In fact, the city eliminated all their TIM fees, which those have to be made up somewhere else. I'm also chair of Friends of Seniors. And number G, I'm not sure that that needs to be on there either. So H, the youth funds, G, the Habitat Free Humanity, F, drug outreach education programs. I think the county does a really great job of doing that. So I would like to see it not be a competitive grant program, but rather the city deciding where the funds could be best used with the help of the cannabis people. I don't, I don't mean to say it like that, but with the help of the cannabis business representative. Because I think the city has so many unmet needs that I really believe that we should keep the tax money within-house. And that is also a community program. The community is Placerville. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Caller eight five seven, go ahead.
Good evening, council. So I think tonight's item is a resolution to create all this under the ordinance. So it's interesting that you're asking the permities to commit 1% of their gross revenues. Who's going to be accounting for all that? And the shenanigans that are sure to follow? The other question too about that is that would seem to be a tax on top of the 4% or whatever you're extracting already. I'm no fan of pot, so I don't really care about this, but I'm just thinking about it legally. If the 1%, you're asking them to contribute to the community benefit program is struck down in court because it's, it is a tax, all of the programs that you're asking them to contribute to must have a nexus for the extraction of that tax. Something to think about, seriously. And then going down to the committee, I really don't think a seven-member committee in the city of Placerville has ever worked. I think you could do, I like the previous caller's recommendation, swap the parks and rec person for, anyway, whatever. To have three members of the cannabis committee on a seven-member committee is just not going to work. You need to have a strong city presence on the committee. One member from the cannabis committee, community, they can have an alternate if they want. Somebody can't make the meeting, they say person B is going to speak, person C is going to speak, that's on the list. Seven-member committee will not work in Placerville. As for the programs, it's very interesting, and it's just a wish list that's going to move from year to year. But I would recommend that if you're going to do the resolution tonight, you either don't state the number of committee members or you say it's up for return and review of city council after we think about it. Seriously. Just some thoughts. Thanks.
Thanks, Michael.
Rodman, go ahead.
Okay, am I unmuted now for sure?
You are.
Okay, I think your list of projects is a little ambitious. I think you should dial it back down. I think Kathy had some very good input there as far as keeping it. If it's going to be to support the community, then support the community of Placerville. If it's going to be to support the community, then support the community of Placerville. Like she said, we've got a CIP list that's, I don't know how many pages long now, but there's things like re-roofing the little pavilion in the, in the park, in the Gold, not Gold Bug Park, but the, the, yeah, the one that's off Cedar Ravine. We've got a lot of things that need to be done in terms of fixing up our, our parks and facilities in the city that I think this could go to more than just turning it over to whoever sends us a grant application. I think this should be a little better thought out and figured out, okay, how many things do we need to do to keep Placerville looking good and cleaned up? So I think that, I, I think Kathy had some good points there. Not just turning this into a, okay, everybody turn in your wish list, and whoever writes the best grant, we give them the money. I, I disagree with that. I think we should set, the city should set what the money's gonna be used for. That's my input.
Thank you, Sue.
Last call, Freedom 12.3 Cannabis Community Benefits Program. Kelly Chisana, go ahead.
Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening, council. Thank you for getting through as much as you could, as quick as you could. Benefit program. It's been a long road to get this far, this process. Uh, before I get too far, welcome, councilmember, no. I know that you're new to the council, and I'm hap- happy to have new people around. And congratulations, Mayor Sargozza. We are, we are currently working with a number of groups and businesses, nonprofits, licenses, and managing all of our own allocations in our funds at our current business. Nobody needs to manage it. We had, do, we have a CPA and a bookkeeper, and have immaculate records of all the funds because that's how these businesses have to run. There's no way that you can continue to run unless you keep everything immaculate. Our bank audits us on our cost annually to make sure we're doing everything, keeping track of more than anybody else. I'm so happy to hear that everybody is so excited about all the funds that are going to be generated as soon as this business can get going. And all of a sudden, you know, energy changes. There's all these amazing groups and programs and projects that everybody wants to chime in and be a part of. And I think it's just awesome to hear. As I was understanding it, we were, we were, we were asked to present how we wanted to benefit the city of Placerville and what groups we wanted to allocate, and how we were interested in. And this was part of our application process, and part of the scoring, and part of our selection process was actually scored on our community benefit ideas and the way that we wanted to be represented in the community. And I feel that I don't want that ownership that these, that to be taken away because everyone all of a sudden sees green, for lack of a better term, but, and they want to put it towards their project or their thing that they're passionate about. And that is so amazing because I'm passionate, too. But I want, you know, I feel that the other community cannabis members will agree with me, or the other licensees, in that we want to be able to come through as what we're passionate about. And, you know, that's why that we were selected, because we do have a true sense of Placerville. I was born and raised, born in Marshall Hospital, spent all of my years here and traveled the world, and I've come back here to raise my family.
Pretty second.
Happy to be here. I hope that everybody doesn't get too lost in how things are organized and how, you know, the, getting lost in where it's going and that, you know, we hope to be able to be a part, better part of this, and we will, we will be a part of benefiting this community as we have always promised to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly.
I see no further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Bring it back to the council for more discussion. I want to thank, I thought there were some really good comments that came right now, that have a lot of, a lot of us to, I can't even talk now, it's 11 o'clock. A lot that we can think about from the comments that were made just right now. One question I had, and this went to Kelly's statements, which was when we scored the project, you know, there was so much given towards what they were gonna do for community benefit. Does that, without getting too far into the weeds, and maybe this is a Mr. Driscoll question as well, are we, is this in alignment with how we kind of, when this was put into the RFP? Oh, John, you're still on here.
I'm sorry. Yeah, was, I didn't get the question, Mr. Mayor.
So my question was, so Kelly kind of brought up, you know, they, they really would like to have some independence, essentially, on how they would allocate their community benefit if they'd agreed to. And I think, not putting words in his mouth, but from what I, I heard was they kind of wanted some ability to do that on their own without, you know, the, the committee deciding how that would be. And I just didn't know, are, are we in an alignment to be able to do that outside of what we had spoken to them about through the process in terms of that community engagement?
Okay. By way of background, the application process required a community benefit element to it, as Kelly stated. And, and also in answer to one of the other questions, before I get directly to your question, I, it's not necessarily considered a tax. So I'm not too concerned about that. In fact, a lot of jurisdictions, which did not use a tax like we did and get it passed by the public, built a community benefit program. And it's a much larger component, obviously, and a larger amount. But the, the ordinance provides that that community benefit can be in the form of a payment of a percentage, or it can be in the form of in-kind contributions. In this case, it sounds to me like the, the licensees are looking to the percentage of revenue as a process they use to provide a community benefit. But the ordinance also provides that the, the money is deposited into a community benefit fund administered by the city, and that the council determines the allocations from that fund. So it's not up to the licensees. It's up to the council or your designee, which would be in the form of the committee that Cleve has suggested in his report. And then it also provides, it's pretty wide to what it can go for because the ordinance provides for benefit of public safety, youth education, community events, community-based organizations, or other uses, and this is the broad one, benefiting the community as deemed appropriate by the city council.
Great. Thank you, John. That's helpful. Any comments? Yes, Vice Mayor. Oh, mute.
Boy, I care there. This list, this list here that we are adding to individually in terms of where we individually see that there's a need, is this a, is this a, once we pass this, is this a comprehensive list that they will use? Or will this list expand and contract based on some other variable? Because I, I do have some concerns about, you know, how some of these are created. I mean, and this is, this is the rabbit hole we're gonna go down, is, is, you know, you know, for instance, I have a concern about homeless. A, a lot of the people from outside of the community come into our community for, for, for homeless services. And are we going to be providing services to the greater county, West Slope, for homeless services that are really, while some of these people may be our community? It, you know, there's a, there's several million dollars that gets, that gets pumped into our homeless programs on an annual basis. Do we really need to be contributing to it through this process? And why I think the homeless and working with them is important. There's, there's the COC, a lot, most of my flows through the COC for its services. And, and they do it, and they're working on some great programs right now as they're, as they're moving forward. So, you know, and I can go down some of these programs and talk about these. So how does, how is this going to, are we all gonna just pile our, our idea of what projects are? And then the, the committee does it, or how's this gonna work?
Yeah, I had the same question. And I think, you know, if you look at the resolution, it's, it's more vague, the resolution in terms of the, you know, one, two, and three on the, on the resolution. It just says, you know, "A committee shall be formed in accordance with the attached program to review and recommend projects. You know, funds shall be submitted in the same manner as the city." So basically, I mean, even though we have a list of items in the staff report, the actual resolution itself still is fairly vague. And I, so I want to say it's kind of left up to the committee at that point to come up with what they are. I guess we could give our recommendations, but it doesn't sound like those would be the only items they'd be able to choose from.
And then, honestly, I did not dig, read through the resolution in detail. Is this, is the, does ultimately the, the council make that decision? That's a recommendation from the committee to the council, the council makes the ultimate decision?
Yes. Yeah, and you notice in the, in the, the, the resolution adopts the program which is attached. So really, the resolution, you're right, it doesn't say much. It's the program that's attached to it that act, how it's working. And it, the committee will development and implement the selection process. This, then they will recommend.
You know, and I, you know, while the three cannabis operators are on the committee, you know, honestly, as a, as a business owner and contributing money to, I, I feel for Kelly when he says, you know, we, through this process, we were supposed to be telling you what we're going to do with it. Now you're telling me that everybody else gets to decide what I'm, what you're all gonna do with my, with the money that, that we've worked hard to earn, and that now the city's, for lack of better words, extracting from them through this process.
Well, and I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's completely true. We are, you're right, we are getting that money from them. And, but that's why, going back to one, one of the comments by one of the, the, the citizens that spoke, I think it is extremely important to have all three representative of each of those businesses on there that, so that they can have strong input into what goes on. You notice there's three, what I would define as three city representatives, three cannabis representatives, and then there's a public member. Now, two, the public members appointed by the city council. So you could argue that they're basically a city council representative, but they're a public member, and you can determine that. And so the idea is to make that somewhat of a balanced committee that can look at equally what those projects. And I, and I want to go back and emphasize, too, that this, Mr. Driscoll read what the ordinance states in terms of projects. I want to emphasize that community benefit, not city benefit. And you can argue that city projects benefit the entire community, but there's also other good community, community projects that, that could be considered by this, and, and that were proposed. Like, say, I will say that the boys, the youth programs, the Habitat for Humanity program, the Drug Outreach program, the student scholarships, and the community cleanup, all of those were projects that were proposed by the applicants, not by, not by me. I think the public safety equipment was maybe one that, was one that I put in there. The City Youth Recreation Scholarship Program was. The cadet program was not. That was proposed by the applicant. So most of these items that are listed here were proposed by those applicants. And I think that's important to meet that goal of them being able to establish and what they agreed to in their, in their application, that these are programs that they, they would like to see.
Patty.
Along those lines, I'm thinking that we have to respect what they did propose, but there might be other things that we're more aware of that maybe they're not. And I, I'll tell you what my, one of, one of the things that I would like to submit, and I think we, the city really, we need to start thinking about, and that's the cemetery up there on Union, you know, on B Street. They are really in need of help, and financially, they, they just can't get anything done. And that is such an important part of our city. And, you know, I just think things like that are just real important to look at.
Now, Patty, that goes to councilman, a councilmember knows suggestion as well in terms of deferred maintenance of just things around the city that, you know, that need fixing, you know. Councilmember, no.
Well, I'd like to address some of the things that the public said. I actually do agree with replacing the Park and Rec Commissioner with our Community Service Director. You know, our Community Service Director, he deals with the entire public and a lot of things going to, uh, he knows a lot more about what the community needs are. He deals with a much larger section of the public than just a Park and Rec Commissioner does. So I, I was in favor of exchanging that out on the committee. And I hear what Drobisch is saying about a five-member committee that generally does work best. However, I lean more what Kelly was saying by giving each of those owners their position on that committee to really have the input for that. So I, I think we should keep it at the seven, keep it with the three cannabis business representatives. And then, of course, you know, maybe more broadly, paying projects within the city. I agree that we, you know, the ci- the city is allowing this, and I think it, you know, should benefit things that are happening within the city with a lot of stuff that we had said. Maybe we could broadly say the other as projects within the city to be considered. And, you know, when you sit down with your, your city manager and your police chief and your community service director, they're gonna kind of let you know what those other projects that would benefit the city on a larger scale would be.
All right, so we've had a lot of, a lot of discussion on, you know, what and how, and if we should add anything else in, because Cleve, you're right, I, and I, you know, the, the resolution is more vague, but you're right, it's, it's the attachment that provides the substantive parts of the resolution.
So I, I want to ask, could you mind, Mayor? I want to ask a question. Do we feel that we're giving this committee enough direction to be successful? And, and whether this, and, and I'm posing the question because I've been noodling this around a bit, trying to, trying to figure out whether what we're giving them is enough for, so when they come back to us, we're not going, wait a minute, why did you do, you know, because what I want to do is see the committee be successful. So when they come back to the council, we can just go, yes. And, 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 you know, and not feel these, these hugs and pulls with these different events, and why didn't you do the one that I liked?
I think you're right, Vice Mayor. And, and I think that goes towards, you know, some of the, the items that have come up that we'd like to see on there. You know, we, I'm not sure, I'm, I want to, you know, list out seven or eight more things to add to this list. I'd rather empower the committee to, I mean, we can certainly provide them, I mean, we can add them, but I, I think, I really want to empower them to come up with, you know, what they think is gonna be best. We can give our recommendations, but I do think, I mean, if we're just gonna provide a prescriptive method for them to do it, then there's not as much reason for them to.
We should do it.
Right. Patty. And then Kara.
Maybe, maybe it would be a good idea not to list the items, you know, to leave that for the future. What do you think about that? I mean, because this way, if we pass this resolution, or tell, it's like, we're, you know, we're really highlighting those, and maybe that isn't, you know, the, I mean, and you're, and Dennis was saying about, you know, making sure the committee, where they were giving them enough direction, but maybe the committee's the one that needs to take suggestions from the public, or, you know, whatever. For instance, my idea, Jackie's idea, you know, Kara's idea, and then mull it over as a committee and not give them these right now.
Kara.
Um, it, it, kind of going to what Patty was saying, it, it feels like we're, like, should we be more specific? Or should we be more broad? And, and I, you know, being part of the cannabis committee and interviewing these businesses, they all did have ideas of how they wanted to contribute, and I think that it's valid to recognize that and that this is their money that they're raising. So I, I do think it's important that they have representation on the committee and that, that we keep their. So I, I do think it's important that they have representation on the committee and that, that we keep their projects that they really are passionate about in. Perhaps we should, and, and I also like, sorry, it's late, so I'm like not super articulate right now. But I agree that we should specify within city, within city limits. I think that's a good idea. I think it's really important that these funds benefit the city of Placerville and that they're not kind of just more generally used for, you know, maybe nonprofits are outside of the city or benefit the county in general or anything like that. And I agree with changing the commissioner to the community services director. And then going back to like, if we should be more broad or more specific, perhaps what we should do is have it be more broad here and then have the council give a list of recommendations, maybe on a yearly basis. That's like, this is the city's priorities, this is what we would like to see. So that when they come back with their list, they know ahead of time, you know, kind of what we're thinking. So that they can be successful and we, we will get something back that we're like, okay, yeah, this looks pretty good. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I like to give them some discretion on how to do this, because I think if we start picking, or, I mean, because some of these, I don't even, I don't know, like Cleve said, some of these are from the, the licensees and some of these are ones that the city put down. And I would like to have them all be equally weighed, since they, they are a big part and they're the ones generating the funds to be able to do this. At the same time, there are some very specific things I think as a city, you know, we'd like to see happen as well. And, you know, it's, it's balancing those two out. Patty?
Well, I think Kathy Lishman really presented, you know, some good basics information of, you know, maybe, maybe some of the, the things. That's why I, I'm thinking that we shouldn't list what we want, you know, because, you know, she brought up good points. That a lot of these that, that are on here, they have other methods of, you know, funding. And I just think it might be a good idea to fund some of the needs that we have, other than, you know, that folks that have tried so hard to raise funds to get things done, to help, help the city, you know, and they can't, they just can't seem to get above it to make their programs work.
Well, to your point Patty, and I, something you mentioned earlier is that the, the licensees may also not, you know, through conversations, they may say, oh, well, you know what, that actually does sound like, you know, we should change out all the batting cages, you know, at the park or do something, you know, at Lumpson. You know, at, with those conversations, they may end up changing their minds on what they think would be, you know, where, where they might want to see the community benefit. And so I, I think that's also, because they don't have the, they don't have the, the insight that we do into what is, is needed throughout the city. Yes, Vice Mayor?
So I, I think we have a great group of individuals and with the selection of a few others that could, that could have a good understanding of the needs of our community. And, and I think aside from some guardrails that we put on there, like, keep it in the city. And I don't even know how to do that, Boys and Girls Club, Services Kids in and outside of the city, but it does support this, the, the, this, our community as well, you know? So, you know, that, that's, it's going to get tricky when you start trying to split the hair there. And there's going to be a lot of people from outside of the city coming in and giving their sales tax dollars and helping generate that, that, their, their gross revenue. So I, I think that we, we should step out of the, the role of trying to dictate to them what to do. I think we have a great group of people that, that, that with some suggestions and whether, rather than these being, these can be suggestions such as, rather than things that are on this list, that they could, could look at, as well as give them latitude to find other places. Because there's, needs are going to change through the years and through the year. And they may find things that are, that are more appropriate and, and better needs. So I, I think we have a great group. I would like to see just putting some, some guardrails on without trying to split the hair too much on the guardrails and give it, and letting, giving them latitude to go forward.
So the guardrails would consist of at least trying to keep this, because you're right, it's going to be difficult to keep it from Boys and Girls Club or someone else that, you know, services Western Slope, but.
Program, I don't want to take away from that.
Right. And, but, so the guardrails would be to the extent we can keep the money within city limits. What other guardrails would we want to see on this? Because I, I think I see a path towards wherever we want to go here. Any other, yes, council member no.
And really trying to keep those projects within the city is the only guardrail, you know, that, that I see. You know, I, I am respecting that they want a little bit of latitude. And I think, you know, what I heard Kelly saying is, hey, give us a chance, you might be impressed, you know? And so I, I don't want to get too bogged down, other than, you know, we, we're allowing these in the city limits. I think that it was meant to be a community benefit in the city limits, and that's the only guardrail I, I really want to put on that.
The only thing I would suggest, and we don't have to do this, you know, if we talked it through, it may not be needed, but I thought one thing might be, is if a program is going to be, in other words, it's going to cost considerable amount to, to effectuate the ability to do it, that that probably not something we want, we would want to see considered so that, because then more of the money is being used up just to actually get a project going versus getting the funds to wherever we want it to go.
And, and I guess another guardrail would be that the project can be completed within the funding year that it's being distributed.
Oh, but, but there's a, when you read through here, it allows for carrying over to other years for bigger projects. So that's already addressed.
Hey, does anyone want to make a, an attempt at a, a motion here?
I'll do it.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'll, I'll move that, that we approve this program with the seven-member committee that switches out the, the Parks and Rec Commission Committee member to the.
Community Service Director.
Community Service Director, thank you. With the guardrails that, that the program must be substantially servicing the members of this, of the city of Placerville. And, and I want to say that, yeah, let's just go with that.
Okay, that works. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion. And just one comment I want to add is, I hear what Dennis is saying about people come into the city, but people also come into the city to use the pool. And so if the pool becomes one project, we are really helping the, the wider community. I think that's going to kind of balance out with the projects in the city.
That's funny you brought that up, because that was actually the, the, the project on my list was the pool, you know? So, there you go.
But it is a city pool and it is, you know, we maintain it and, you know, so I, I, you know, like Dennis was saying, you can split hairs, but you just have to look at all this stuff logically, you know?
Council member Taylor?
And then just to clarify, there will be a process for the public and council members and the council to communicate with the committee and let them know, you know, give them some feedback about what is kind of the, the biggest priorities that the city is facing in any given year, while they consider how to use this money.
Or make recommendations, you mean?
Yeah.
I mean, aren't these meetings going to be open to the public and in that fashion?
Right.
All give their input into it?
Which would then necessitate more than one or two meetings though. To, to Dennis's earlier point, that they're going to probably have to get together a little bit more in order to take that public comments, you know, and then go back and, and have a discussion about it as well.
Okay.
All right, so, so that, yeah, so we have a first, we have a first and a second. Do we have any other comments or, yes, Mr. Morris?
Sorry, the other items that were talked about as far as adding to the list, we're, we're not doing any of those. We do have a catch-all in terms of the other.
Right.
Want to add any of those to those or just leave it as is?
I think, I don't, I don't, I don't think we should specifically name anything, but that's just where I'm coming from, but.
I think we're going to have the ability to, to do that as well as the public. So I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think that was sort of the consensus here. But please, if anyone else has a different.
In the city, that kind of covers it.
Jackie, I can't hear you, you keep cutting out.
I'm sorry, I said, I think, I think we pretty much said projects in the city and that kind of, I think, is the, the freedom in the other, the kind of what we were, what the council was thinking. I mean, we've given some suggestions, but as long as it's a project in the city, that kind of gives them the latitude of what we're looking for.
So do we leave these on here as suggestions though, the current ones that are on here? Is that okay?
I'm, I'm okay with it as is, yeah.
I think that's fine.
With, with the other.
Could we say IE and so it wouldn't be specific, you know?
Or such as?
Such, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, I don't think this is a, a, an exclusive or exclusive list anyway.
Right. Okay, so with that then, I'm going to go ahead and call roll call.
Mayor Sargosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
Council member Barelli?
Hi.
Council member Taylor?
Hi.
Council member no?
Hi.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Cleve. John, everybody for your work on this. Thank you for the callers, for your feedback as well. Okay, I'm going to keep on moving here to our council reports. And because of the time, again, I'll, I'll ask everyone to be brief or just nothing earth-shattering that we, we move through here. So Transit Authority?
We, we honor some, our outgoing commissioners, Franson, Commissioner Beer Camp and Commissioner Acuna. So it's going to be pretty much an all-new board coming up. And then we got an update from Executive Director Matt Mock. They are requesting, you know, they're keeping up with heightened COVID cleanings and they are requesting that transit be used for essential travel only at this time.
Thank you.
So they're stopping the bus routes, Kara?
They're not, they're not stopping, they're just, as part of their, they're not stopping the bus routes at this time, but they are trying to get the message out that they're encouraging people to use transit just for, you know, essential travel. Oh, and also, we approved as a staffing threshold increase to expand service up to South Lake Tahoe, which is an exciting development.
Wow.
All right, that is very cool. Okay, EDCTC?
We also honored the same outgoing commissioners. And we talked a lot about Highway 50.
It was a rather robust conversation about Highway 50 and, and a lot of people. And, and I think it's moving in a positive direction. And one of the biggest concerns that, that the city of Placerville brought forward, you know, is that, is that with, you got the hotspot study and you got all these things going on that are a minimum 10 years out for, before they, before we're even see ground broke, if we get to that point. We have the, the green means, the trip to green, not the green means, that's another program, trip to green program, this will be next fall. We don't want to, we want to have meetings to help protect the city and have discussions about preventing some of the things that occurred this last year with the PSP, the red flag warning days, the power, the power going out in the middle of all this, as well as an extremely busy Apple Hill day when we have gridlock in the, in the, in the, in our community. And, and so we, we need to get all the players together to, to look at, to, to discuss that. We don't know what the solution is, but we just, we definitely, we've been trying many years to do that, but we still need to keep trying.
I think the consensus is, we're not going to stop. We, we've just got to, we've got to start having meetings right away. We're not going to let this drop.
Okay, LaFco, that was Mark. So we'll go ahead and skip over LaFco, Saqog. We had a couple of committee meetings. We renewed our contract with our state lobbyist, tried to pass the, the Green Means Go, the 700 million for the greater, for the Saqog region at the state capitol, they're going to try again this year in order to meet our, our MTP. We pretty much need the funding to be able to do that. And we're not the only cog that has that problem, but we are trying as a, as a region to, to get that money allocated through, through the state. So, and then our, our next meetings will be this, the next Thursday. Fire Safety Council?
We had a meeting and unfortunately, with my computer problems, I wasn't able to participate. But I do have the report from Chris and she said that what they just, what they're working on is that the Placerville Fire Council is collaborating with the Texas Hill Fire Council on a grant application to FEMA for vegetation management. And that's, several of you mentioned that tonight. And she said, we're just getting underway this month with organizational meetings and they'll keep us posted. And they're, they are addressing, and Cleve, maybe you know more about this. It was brought to their attention that, by a board member, that the clearing on the Lumpson Ranch property in the way that it's being done, that they're just inadvertently pulling it out and, and piling it up, making a fire hazard right there, you know? And so one of the committee members was supposed to look into it. And again, they are just really advocating, you know, for cleaning up your yards and, and it's, it's difficult, I mean, they're running into the same thing that everybody else is. It's difficult to do what they really want to do because of this COVID thing, so that's it.
All right, thank you, Patty. Okay, so we're going to move on to item 14, which are requests for future agenda items. Yes, council member Taylor?
Um, as I mentioned, I'd like to request that we make a proclamation to denounce racism, hate and extremism.
Any?
I'll agree with that.
Yeah, I was going to say, any, any consensus to that, yeah, I think, I think we'll be good with that. Yes, council member Barelli?
I'd like to talk about the possibility of the police department getting a drone. I talked to the Chief Joe Rinn earlier on, and I ran it by Cleve. But I, and, and the police department did submit an application for a grant and unfortunately, they didn't get it. So he's, Chief Rinn said that he would prepare all the, the things that we need to know, costs, et cetera, and what it, but I just think it would be a terrific asset and especially with this fire, you know, thing that we have going on and also with the homeless situation. And he agreed, and so I would like to add that to the list.
Okay, Chief, any, any additional comments here?
No. We can do that, we can, we, we've kind of preliminarily, when the grant became available, started looking at the program and the benefits. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to really dig deeper and find out if it would be something that would be beneficial for public safety services. How, how soon would it be appropriate to bring that back? We can talk about it next, well, when's the next meeting? January?
Well, I believe, well.
Yeah, we should have something together by then. If not, I can talk to, to Cleve about making some adjustments. But it's data that's readily available. And partners within Eldorado County, a law enforcement agency within Eldorado County have a drone program. So really, we're not going to reinvent the wheel, we're just going to take a look at what they're doing.
Okay, everybody okay with that? All right, I do have one myself, this is actually something that we've all talked about, I think, this evening at one point or another, and that's the vegetation management ordinance, just an update, it's not necessarily an. ordinance. Just an update, it's not necessarily an action item, but I kind of would like to know where we're at, how we're doing, what we need to do, and get a better sense to the community of what's going on there and what might be, you know, things that we need to tackle.
Yep.
Everybody okay? Okay. And that is, it's not necessarily something that has to come back January 12, but, you know, in the near future.
It is one of those things that the more we delay, the closer we get to the highway. We can't manage vegetation anymore because of fire hazards.
Right. Yes, and Vice Mayor.
And and I would like, you know, this is, this isn't a timely and important issue in that it'll still be after this. No, we do not have a EDCDC meeting in January. So the first meeting will be in in February, the first Thursday of February. So and I'm sure it doesn't, if we're, if we have space, the media, whether this next meeting, the first meeting or second meeting in January would be appropriate to discuss giving the city, giving, figuring out how we can work with the EDCDC a little bit on this, but but giving authority or permission for a member or two member group to work with, to be able to work with the with a work group or a committee that would be developed through the in partnership with the county and EDCDC for discussions on Highway 50, Apple Hill, and everything basically east of Placerville and how that traffic impacts our community, the city. Does that make sense, Cleve?
That's fine. Yep.
Okay. Gather witty a little bit and figure that out. But yeah.
That makes sense to me. Is anybody have any, everybody okay with that coming back to us as a, an item?
It's what, it's just like we, we talked about this before, it, you know, I just don't want to have another committee, you know, and do nothing, you know, and this, we've got to have do something that's got some teeth in it. Dennis, you and I talked about this and, you know.
What I, what I'm, so what I'm getting at is that we need to have conversations that we haven't had before with the county and with potentially, you know, various entities up the hill, if you will. And and I don't want to unilaterally go out and do that, although I would, I'd love to start tomorrow. I feel that I don't want to start speaking on behalf or working with the city without some direction or recognition that this is, this is what we want to do. And so that that's from my perspective. I would love to go have those conversations right now, but I don't think it's, I didn't think it was appropriate without at least having that conversation with the rest of you.
Right. So it's really like having that imprimatur from the city for whether, you know, a member or two members to go out and have those discussions.
That makes sense, Patty.
It makes sense. But what I, okay, I think I'm, I was thinking that what you were talking about is that we need to do something within the city, you know, to to can, you know, to, in other words, to take care of issues that are going on within the city.
No, it's a broader, more global approach to in discussion. We really haven't had, whether it's a planning issues on the on the county level and what's driving the increase, this continued elevation, it's whether it's the National Forest, it's the, it's Apple Hill, it's wineries, it's the ski resorts, it's Tahoe, it's, there's a lot of factors involved with this that has, that's out of the control of Caltrans and their ability, they manage the traffic that pulls on to the freeway. They don't, they don't manage that. And so those are the conversations I'm talking about that we can have this conversation. I don't want to get into too much discussion here about it.
Right.
The this, but those conversations are the ones that we need to have.
Okay.
Okay, any opposition to that? Okay, seen none. We'll connect that as a future agenda item. Okay, anything else? All right, seen none. We'll move on to item 15. City, any city manager or staff reports tonight, Cleve?
Just quickly, one item I wanted to bring to your attention. As you know, we had a project on Main Street, the event center at 301 305 Main Street, that was, has been appealed from the Planning Commission approval, has appealed to the city council. Our appeal guidelines state that that has to be heard within 40 days. Initially, that 40 day period would have fallen before your January 12 meeting, requiring a special meeting. We've had conversations with both the applicant for that project and the appellant, both agreed to that they'll extend that deadline line to allow it to happen on January 12. However, I want to caution you that January 12 is going to really stack up, obviously, when we miss a meeting. And we also have some things that continue to push a little bit. You can see where we're at with this meeting tonight. So I want to look very carefully at that. I want to state that we may perhaps need to look at a special meeting anyway in January, probably not before January 12, but in order to hopefully kind of do a catch up. Maybe we have to have a special meeting to catch up on some items and then we can get to
Got it.
Unless you have other ideas regarding that, I'm open to those, but I want to let you know that's where we're at right now.
The only other thing I would throw out, Cleve, would be is if we start, you know, as opposed to starting at five with closed or whatever, we start maybe like at three, you know, just to kind of churn through a little bit more. I mean, it makes for a long, all day meeting, but maybe we get more done as well.
I'm open to that if the council is, yep.
I'd rather, I'd rather meet early, earlier than, you know, like, we're getting on to midnight. And, you know, everybody's tired.
Yeah.
I do kind of feel like, given the things that will be coming up in January, even if we start at three, it still might go until midnight.
Kara.
It might be best to do, I'm open to whatever. I, either way is fine with me. I could do two meetings, I could do one meeting, one really long meeting. We might have to schedule a break, though, if it's a three to midnight.
I'm okay with two meetings, really, you know, establishing another day.
Yeah, we can look at that and look at our agenda items. And again, it may be a combination. We may start earlier. We may, and then maybe add a special meeting, too, just to hopefully get back on track a little bit. Because I've noticed I'm looking at some of the items that are on our agenda coming up, that we maybe get a little bit behind and will, some of those may be time sensitive that we'll have to have to handle. So.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll look to you, Cleve, to what those suggestions will be and kind of go from there. Upcoming items, item 16, we just mentioned one of them, which is the 301 Main Street CUP Appeal, Appointments of the Mayor and Vice Mayor, Hangtown Creek Sewer, Claydell Locust Project Update, WPI 2.2 Construction Award, some of the projects that are coming up, which may be at the next meeting or potentially at a special meeting. So with that, I will adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yes, that's right. Merry Christmas.